Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, September 25th, 2024. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. Can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePaine?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Dr. Peck?
Here.
Mr. Pirro?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
No.
Ms. Sharma?
Here.
Mr. Tofano?
Here.
Mr. Zeichner?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in electronic notes provided by having the date, time, and place there posted May 10th, 2024, and September 20th, 2024 at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the closed session resolution. Whereas the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6 provides that the Monroe Township Board of Education may hold an executive session from which the public is excluded to discuss matters that are confidential or are one of the nine subject matters listed Section 12B of the Act, and whereas that the Board hereby declares that its discussion of the following subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure. Now therefore be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the Board shall go into executive session to discuss the following items. Additional items may be determined and announced as needed. The matters involving collective negotiations and/or negotiations of terms and conditions, pending or anticipated litigation, and matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, matters involving employees in terms of their employment contract, and HIB investigation involving students. Be it further resolved that said discussion may be disclosed to the public when reasons for discussing and acting upon it in closed session no longer exist, action may be taken on any of the items stated above. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll be in closed session for approximately one hour and will return at 7:15. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Coming out of closed session, I do have a resolution to be read. Be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education approves the memorandum of agreement with Teamsters Local 11 affiliated with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters related to the terms and conditions of employment of its members by the Board for the period July 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. The Board President, Superintendent, Business Administrator, and Board Attorney are authorized to take all actions to effectuate this action of the Board. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Hold on. Questions, discussion, comments? Okay, now can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is our approval of minutes. The first one is the Public Board of Education meeting agenda minutes from August 21st, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? Absentions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? The next one is the closed session meeting, August 21st, 2024. Any?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any absentions? Recusals? Seeing none, then the next item on our agenda is our Student Board Members Report. I'd like to welcome back our two Student Board Members.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. Our new Junior Board of Ed Representative is Sienna Patel, and she'll be starting us off tonight.
Hi, it's lovely to meet you all. Today, in this past month, Oaktree welcomed 570 students in grades K through 3 on September 4th. It was a very smooth opening. All students already attended our annual Behavior Expectations Assemblies, at which they learned about the rules we have in place to keep them safe. Back-to-school night was held on September 17th. Students and their families were welcomed by the PTA during an ice pop social on September 11th. They are also hosting a clothing drive on September 28th as a fundraiser. We're looking forward to an exciting October filled with parades, a week of respect, an assembly, trunk or tree, and school pictures.
Moving on to Applegarth. Applegarth's back-to-school night will be held tomorrow, September 26th, 2024. Fourth grade is at 6:00 PM and fifth grade begins at 7:30 PM. Principals got to know students in conduct assemblies held the first full week of September, and they discussed the code of conduct and keeping the status as a national school of character by adhering to their FISH philosophy of being friendly, inclusive, supportive, and honest. Teachers honor the memory of 9/11 through a variety of activities in their classes, including read-alouts, interactive videos, digital learning experiences, reading interviews, and first-person accounts, and sharing about heroism. Thank you to the Social Studies Supervisor, Ms. Trust, for compiling wonderful resources for teachers to use. Teachers also celebrated Constitution Day on September 17th with a Constitution-themed escape room. Fourth and fifth grade choir and band kicked off the week of September 23rd. The PTA hosted an ice pop social on September 11th, which was well-attended and allowed children and parents to meet new friends. A big thank you to all of the parents who signed up to be Room, Parents, and Volunteers this school year. Information will be coming out electronically very shortly to confirm participation. Lastly, Applegarth would like to thank high school student Arav Modi for the wonderful map of the USA he and his troop painted in the Applegarth Play Area. They would also like to thank Eagle Scout Param Gaitia for the Gaga pit he built for Applegarth School.
And moving on to Mill Lake. Mill Lake School is off to an amazing start, with staff and students excited to return and dive right into the new school year. This year's theme, "It's Always Sunny at Mill Lake," set a positive tone as all staff showed their school support by wearing yellow sunshine shirts on the first Friday. On September 11th, students dressed in red, white, and blue to honor Patriots' Day and pay tribute to our heroes. The following day, on September 12th, Mill Lake hosted its highly-successful back-to-school night, which was followed by a fun pajama day for the entire school. In support of pediatric cancer awareness, this Friday, September 27th, 2024, the Mill Lakers will show their support by participating in Gold and Blue Jeans Day. As we move into October, Mill Lake will hold Picture Day on October 7th. The school will also conduct Bus Safe Feudrals on October 9th, with a rain date set for October 10th. Early dismissals are scheduled for both October 11th and October 14th, the latter due to in-staff service. Parent-teacher conferences for preschool and kindergarten will take place on October 15th, with additional conferences on October 16th and 17th, including an evening session on the 17th. Fire Prevention Week will kick off on October 21st, ensuring students are well-prepared and safe.
Next up is Woodland Elementary School. Woodland welcomed back students for the 2024 to 25 school year and introduced their school theme, "We Grow Together." Together, Woodland and families will provide the necessary strong foundation to help students thrive and grow with them this school year. Students with their families created leaves for the school's family tree, which included family pictures, words, drawings, et cetera, to represent their family's interests. In honor of Patriot Day on September 11th, all students and staff wore red, white, and blue. Classrooms also participated in several different activities to commemorate this very important date. Students have been given an overview on how to join fifth-grade Character Crew and Student Council. Their Woodland title, Programming, had a really early start this year with two weeks of early ELA and mathematics learning, with their Ready-to-Rise Programming at the end of August. Their program had a great attendance rate and students were excellent contributors to their summer growth before the school year started.
And moving on to Barclaybrook. Barclaybrook has had a wonderful opening to the 2024-25 school year, and it is so wonderful to have our classroom and hallways filled with the smiling children excited for the year ahead of us. On Wednesday, September 11th, they held their first School Spirit Day. Students and staff were invited to wear red, white, and blue in recognition of Patriot Day. The school day began with a moment of silence to remember and honor the sacrifices made by the men and women of our country, as well as those made by our veterans and military. It was truly beautiful to see Mill Lake filled with patriotic school spirit. Barclaybrook's back-to-school night was held on Thursday, September 12th. We'd like to thank all the families for coming to meet their children's teachers and visit their school. Barclaybrook had their Great Kid Initiative up and running for the new school year. We use the acronym GREAT to represent our core values of growth mindset, respect, empathy, acceptance, and trust. Our students have been learning what it means to be great in all areas of the school. Each week, we will recognize two students from each grade level for demonstrating great behavior, and will hold monthly trimester assemblies to recognize those students who continually demonstrate our school's core values.
Next step is Brookside Elementary School. In honor of Patriot Day, the staff and students wore red, white, and blue. Brookside School had their Picture Day on September 18th, and Brookside's back-to-school night will take place tomorrow, September 26th, at 6:30 PM. To recognize Fire Prevention Week, the third grade will visit the fire safety house, and the fourth and fifth graders will also have an assembly. On October 9th and 10th, the Barclaybrook and Brookside PTA will run the PTA Fall Book Fair.
And on to our middle school. The middle school finished fourth in fundraising in the nation for the American Heart Association through their Hoops for Hearts program, raising $30,000, led by our PE teacher, Misty Drake. MTMS had their annual back-to-school nights for each grade on September 10th, 16th, and 25th. Parents have the chance to follow their child's schedule and meet our wonderful teachers. On September 24th, MTMS held an interest meeting for their sixth-grade production of Joust, a mighty medieval musical. The play will be held on October 24th. More information will be posted.
And last but not least, Monroe Township High School. Back-to-school night was September 18th. High school students, parents, and guardians had a wonderful night meeting with their teachers and advisors. Senior Night for the parents of the senior class was held yesterday, September 24th, and provided valuable information for the students' college application process. Throughout this entire week so far, students have been actively participating in Spirit Week by dressing up in pajamas, white lies, as their favorite holiday, in the Western theme, and in purple and gold. The pep rally for the high school's varsity football team is going to be held on Friday, September 27th. Lastly, please do come out on September 27th at 7:00 PM to support the high school team at the Hugh Walsh Field. Thank you all for listening. Have a great evening.
(Applause)
Thank you both so much. It really is the highlight of our meeting to have our Student Board Members Reports. It gives us really a great purview of everything that's happening in the district, so thank you both very much, and we're happy that you're back. The next item in our agenda is we have some presentations this evening. So the first presentation that we have is the Apple Distinguished Schools Program. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Hello. It's that Apple Education team is really pleased to join you all this evening to talk about the Apple Distinguished Schools Program. Apple Distinguished Schools are centers of leadership and educational excellence that demonstrate Apple's vision for learning with technology, and we believe they're some of the most innovative schools in the world. The Apple Distinguished Schools Program identifies and celebrates the amazing work schools are doing to innovate teaching and learning with Apple technology. It provides leaders in the community with rich professional development, networking, and research opportunities to expand leadership capacity. Schools in the program work as a community to learn, collaborate, grow, and together inspire other schools in their local and global communities. As of February 2024, there are 889 Apple Distinguished Schools from 37 countries around the world. To become an Apple Distinguished School, the school must be nominated by the local Apple team based on evidence aligned with a rubric which is centered on three pillars: Inspire, Imagine, and Impact. The school then completes a written application and produces a short video, which is reviewed by a committee of worldwide Apple education leaders who compare evidence to the rubric. Under Inspire, schools demonstrate exemplary practices to lead, learn, and thrive in our dynamic world through vision, leadership, teaching, and learning practices. Under Imagine, the Apple Distinguished Schools empower learners to discover new possibilities and solutions. They show agency, collaboration, creativity, and culture. And the third, under Impact, is schools in the community commit to leaving the world better than they found it by engaging in ongoing research, sharing success, practicing and promoting accessibility and inclusion, as well as equity and diversity. Being an Apple Distinguished School is not only a recognition of educational excellence and exceptional leadership, but it's also an opportunity to collaborate with a worldwide leadership network of like-minded peers. Schools in the network receive exclusive invitations to leadership events, professional development opportunities, and further their innovative work with committed support from the Apple Education team. So, it's with great pleasure that I announce to you tonight that Monroe Township High School has been named an Apple Distinguished School for the years 2024 through 2027.[896.94][896.94](Applause) So, Monroe Township High School may be new to the Apple Distinguished Schools Program,
a decade. We have a one-to-one program where all of our students have their own iPad, and our
but certainly not new to Apple. After 10 years of iPad in the hands of students and faculty who also use Mac, it's time to
teachers are provided with iPads and MacBooks to create and deliver content.
celebrate this incredible school and their dedication to leading innovation. Students in Monroe High School are engaged in learning, they are creators, they are thinkers,
The classroom has really transformed, really expanding upon what our students learn, what they share, and what they can provide not only to their teachers but to their classmates
they're innovators, and they are the future, and they're also really great speakers. These students are supported by incredible faculty that are dedicated to their students
and their peers worldwide.
My goal is for the students to interact with the text by using color-coded annotating
and engage in their own professional learning on a regular basis. I'd also like to call out the exceptional leadership at the building, and they have incredible vision, they communicate well with their faculty, and they share ideas with other schools that are looking to grow.
in iBooks.
So I'd like to share with you the one piece of the application, which is the video that
Blue for characterization, underlining something that may be a question, green for setting,
was produced, and you'll see all of those things throughout that video.
and it helps them to be able to be more interactive in class and to help get to those higher levels of author's craft.
So, the class is called Engineering Essentials, and it's a class for students of all cognitive abilities to be able to come together and learn about different types of engineering. This specific unit had to do with computer science, so they were learning about coding, and they were able to create different codes for either light effects, moving distances, creating sounds. They learned to troubleshoot, so if something wasn't working within the code, they're learning to solve it on their own.
We live in a dynamic world. Having used the Apple platform in my education has taught me to keep up with rapid changes, so I will be able to thrive in whatever field I went to.
So, we recently participated in a film contest, and having the one-on-one iPads really helped us share our ideas and bring our collective vision to life.
So, my goal after high school was to create a nonprofit organization, and I feel like using the Apple products and the Apple tools that the school has provided me with, I got a better understanding of different applications I can use in order to make that dream a reality.
I think our responsibility is to teach students how to live in a world that doesn't exist yet. The Apple platform, the iPads especially, allow our students to explore places and ideas that they have never explored before. In the future, they're going to have a voice. In the future, they're going to have a part to play in this digital landscape that we're living in.
So now I'd like to invite Dr. Higgins, Principal of Monroe Township High School, to say a few words.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to take a moment and say good evening, and on behalf of the entire MTHS community, I want to thank you for your recognition. As Dr. Chanley says, success is always a team effort, and I want to take a few moments to thank our team at the high school, who worked so hard to make our school an Apple Distinguished School. I want to especially recognize Ms. Terry Weiss, Mr. Boris Sladic, Mr. John Mazzola, Mr. Elliot Feldman, Ms. Sharon DiMarco, and Ms. Megan Cobb, and of course, Dr. Chanley and Dr. Lehman, who have been involved in this process from the beginning. Most importantly, I want to thank the students of Monroe Township High School, who have all come to embody what an Apple Distinguished School is. I have been part of the Apple iPad initiative from the beginning, and I can tell you that we've come a long way. Every day, our students discover new possibilities, new solutions, and commit to leaving their educational environment better than when they arrived. As the Board of Education, you are often asked to put a value on education. What our students commit to and produce cannot be measured with a price tag. You have continued year after year to provide our students with the best possible education. So I say thank you, and I congratulate you too, because this recognition is as much yours as it is the high school's. I want to thank our partners at Apple Professional Learning, who have been working hand-in-hand with our teachers and students since this all began in 2011. The committee who approved our application questioned why MTHS had not been recognized sooner. I'm not sure what the answer to that is, but moving forward, we will make it a priority to show recognition to all of our students and our staff accomplishments. In doing so, I would like to recognize some of our staff, who have recently completed a professional program and are now individual members of the Apple Teacher Program. Some of them are with us here tonight. Ms. Sharon DiMarco, teacher of Language Arts.[1241.78][1241.78](Applause) Ms. Larissa Miller, teacher of Video Production in the back.[1249.13][1249.13](Applause) Mr. Paul Spinelli, teacher of Biology.[1253.13][1253.13](Applause) And also, who cannot be with us tonight, Mr. Tom Lyon, teacher of Psychology, and Ms. Paulina Pereira, teacher of Math.[1264.01][1264.01](Applause) We look forward to continuing our work with APL and having more teachers work through this program. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you all for your time, and we appreciate all that you do for our children. At this time, I would ask that if you could join me and other members of our high school and our high school team and our high school students in the front, so we can take a picture. We have an Apple Distinguished Sign that we've had in front of the school since the first day, and we have a beautiful plaque that we're going to hang in an area of prominence. So if you would join us in the front, maybe we can have them take a picture, ask our students to come up. You can leave your iPads on the table.[1308.01][1308.01](Laughter) But our teachers as well.
In the front that way?
Yeah, in the front, I think.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Dr. Higgins and the high school team. That is an amazing accomplishment, and we are so proud and so honored that we could be here to celebrate it with you tonight. So thank you very much.[1327.11][1327.11](Applause) The next presentation we have is our strategic plan.
Okay, I'm just waiting for it to come up on the screen. Welcome, everybody, this evening. A nice warm welcome back to school. Although we are welcoming you back, we are already ready to start October next week, and fall is upon us. So I don't really know where the back-to-school went, but it came very quickly. So for purposes of the Strategic Action Plan, and it's a good thing I'm wearing glasses, one of the things that I always say, and it's not just a mantra, I truly mean it, is success is always a team effort. Nothing exists in isolation, whether it be the support of the community, inclusive of parents as well as those who are not parents, support of the Board of Education, the administrative staff, the teachers, the children. I say the children last, but in my book, the children really could be first, because they are the reason why we're all here. So, the strategic plan was a conversation that was started last school year, and a couple of things that I want to bring to everyone's attention is the Strategic Action Plan, which is a five-year overview of where we are going in this district, is not a requirement of the state of New Jersey. It is something that a district may choose or choose not to pursue. It is something since I have been here for the last 22 years that we have done, and what we like to do is we like to look at what we accomplished and what we'd like to continue to accomplish, and it is a living document. A strategic plan should not be a checkoff of compliance, but rather a pathway and a journey for where we'd like to be with our children. We were very fortunate that in the initiation process, which was February 5th, as you can see from the screen, we brought in the New Jersey School Boards Association. They are one association that can be utilized, that we do ask to work with us. We go ahead and we get approval from the board, just to let you know the process, because there is a fee involved, and then they work directly with us. And at that time, we then set up dates in which we meet and we ask the public to join us. So we had meetings, three specific meetings with the public, March 20th, April 25th, May 15th. We had, in general, between 20, 30, and 40 individuals come. We were very fortunate that we had a really nice array of those people that came. We had board members that joined us, the administrators came, we had teachers, we had some parents, we had some community members from our active adult communities, we had just a really nice array of people, because we want to hear everybody's voice. And during that meeting, those meetings, rather, we were fortunate that we had Mrs. Patricia Reese at the time work with us. She came with a plan, and we allowed everyone to have a voice, and everybody worked, and we worked with the end in mind. So when you begin with the end in mind, we want to say, what is it that we want to end with? And we want to end with our children excelling. We want to end with our children being successful in various areas. It could be high level of academics, it could be vocational. Regardless of where it goes, we want our children to just rise to their highest level at our highest level of expectation. So we were very fortunate to be able to do that. As I turn the program over to Dr. Lehman to continue, I would like to also recognize Mr. Maralda, because as our Director of Communications and various other things, he worked instrumentally with Ms. Reese, with us, to sit down and work to have a plan. One of the things that Dr. Lehman is going to go over is that, and I said this and I'm going to repeat it, it is not a checkoff sheet. This is not a compliance. This is a living document. This is where our children- to get, where we'd like to be with our children. And in order to do that, we need everybody's collaboration. We were very fortunate that in the initiation process, which was February 5th, as you can see from the screen, we brought in the New Jersey School Boards Association. They are one association that can be utilized, that we do ask to work with us. We go ahead and we get approval from the board, just to let you know the process, because there is a fee involved, and then they work directly with us. And at that time, we then set up dates in which we meet and we ask the public to join us. So we had meetings, three specific meetings with the public, March 20th, April 25th, May 15th. We had, in general, between 20, 30, and 40 individuals come. We were very fortunate that we had a really nice array of those people that came. We had board members that joined us, the administrators came, we had teachers, we had some parents, we had some community members from our active adult communities. We had just a really nice array of people, because we want to hear everybody's voice. And during that meeting, those meetings, rather, we were fortunate that we had Mrs. Patricia Reese, at the time, work with us. She came with a plan, and we allowed everyone to have a voice, and everybody worked, and we worked with the end in mind. So when you begin with the end in mind, we want to say, what is it that we want to end with? And we want to end with our children excelling. We want to end with our children being successful in various areas. It could be high level of academics, it could be vocational. Regardless of where it goes, we want our children to just rise to their highest level at our highest level of expectation. So we were very fortunate to be able to do that. As I turn the program over to Dr. Lehman to continue, I would like to also recognize Mr. Maralda, because as our Director of Communications and various other things, he worked instrumentally with Ms. Reese, with us, to sit down and work to have a plan. One of the things that Dr. Lehman's going to go over is that, and I said this, and I'm going to repeat it, it is not a checkoff sheet. This is not a compliance. This is a living document. This is where our children are, where we are, whether it be in facilities, operations, leveraging technology, and students excelling, and it's where we want to go. So one of the terms that you're going to start hearing a lot is the portrait of a graduate. I had an opportunity to go to the school boards last year, and the administration, some of our leadership was with us as well, and we saw, what does it mean? What is the portrait of a graduate? And all I could say, as we continue, is we need to always do what is best for our kids and set them up for success through facilities, through technology, through excellence, through our staff, through our administration, and through the support of the board. So, welcome. I'm glad you're here. And, Dr. Lehman, if you'd like to continue.
Sure. And whoever's running the slides, I'll give you the heads up when we're ready to go to the next one. I'm going to build a little bit on what Dr. Chanley said. The sense and the purpose of the Strategic Plan is to develop a common vision, shared priorities, and ultimately have this document, have this vision as our North Star as the district. So when we look at, whether it's board goals, school goals, administrative goals, even down into the classroom teacher goals, if we're all pulling in the same direction, we can move this district forward. And this is the overview of how we can do that, and the outcomes of this come from several meetings with our community, our school community, in terms of identifying areas of focus, which are on the screen, all the way down to a goal statement. So the outcome of the first three meetings, we have three areas of focus, goal areas. One is facilities and operations, one is leveraging technology, and another is students excelling. What the final meeting in our strategic planning process did was define a goal statement. So you can move to the next slide. As we go through each goal area, I'll go over the goal statement, and then I'll also explain what some of the other information on this slide is. So in the area of facilities and operations, the goal statement is, and again, this is an outcome from our community participation in New Jersey School Board's strategic planning process, the Monroe Township School District Facilities Department, and you will see the initiatives and focus areas under here, stretched beyond just the facilities department, they're much broader than that, will create and maintain a safe, efficient, conducive learning environments for staff, students, and the community. What we did over the summer administratively is we took these goal statements, and we turned them into action initiatives. You could look at them as priorities and projects, under defined focus areas. So I'll take you through our focus area. So in this facilities and operations goal area, we have an operations and logistics optimization focus area. We have a facilities optimization focus area. Operations optimization in the area of human resources and business operations, a transportation optimization section, as well as district advocacy and funding. Underneath each of those focus areas are highlighted projects, tasks, initiatives, that we can engage in over the next several years, some of which are we're engaging in currently, some of which we are going to research and develop, partially implement, and some of which we are probably going to put a bow on and wrap them up by the end of the school year. So, for instance, operations, logistics, and optimization. The first one there is Energy Savings Improvement Plan. That's the ESIP Plan. We've been talking about that for several months. We moved beyond the development and research piece of that. We're in the implementation piece. We're getting our ducks in a row to develop a scope of project to be addressed through our ESIP program. Once we do that, the actual construction projects that are outcomes from this will span over the next few years. So that is an ongoing piece that we will engage in for the next several years, but we're currently engaged in now. Another theme that you'll see there, and you're going to see some of these projects, they're linked to multiple areas, is our demographic study. That's another area we've been talking about. We're going to engage in that within the next board meeting or two. We'll bring on a demographer. The timeline for that is to be completed end of January, February, and that is, and you'll see later in some of the future slides, that is a foundational piece of information for us to use, moving forward with many other things on this list, many other things within this project. One of the themes that we thought was important to have spread through all of our goal areas is the advocacy and funding piece. You're going to see that that same focus area is in each of the three goal areas. The reason we find that that's important is, no matter what we are doing within this school district, we always have a responsibility to advocate for us, whether it's financially, whether it's representation at a legislative level, looking for different funding opportunities, because the common theme with everything in a strategic plan is, for the most part, it's something new, something expanded, something growing, and there's a financial piece associated with it. So we want to make sure this advocacy and funding piece is a common thread regardless of what we're working on. Next slide, please. So our second goal area is leveraging technology. Our goal statement is the Monroe Township School District will create and maintain safe, efficient, and conducive learning environments for students, staff, and the community. Again, that's an outcome of our strategic planning process with school boards. The community pieced together and formulated that goal statement. What we did is we took a look at some focus areas over the summer. We categorized one area as instructional technology, in terms of accessibility and curricular integration, and you'll see a list of some things, tasks, that we naturally reoccur every few years, as well as some stretch opportunities in the realm of, what does MTMS technology look like in the future? What is K-5 technology access look like in the future? In addition to what we're already working on in terms of refreshing the high school technology as well. Another focus area is digital presence and communications. We started a total overhaul and refresh of our website. That's one of the projects, like I said, some of the things we're working on, we'll be able to put a bow on. Many of these projects are going to be things that we will stretch for in years to come. Another project that will occur at some point this year, but it's directly correlated with our website refresh, is the total overhaul of our notification system. It was an outdated notification system. Both the website and that notification system are sunsetting, so we are transitioning to this new notification piece. And the foundation of our communication with the community is really through this communication system, through our website, through social media. We don't really have a lot of print media anymore. That's, you know, not something that we generate very often, and you'll see most of this technology focus is expanding and refreshing and updating our digital presence. And again, you'll see district advocacy cycling back through here. Next slide. Students excelling, and this is where you see a lot of the meat here. The goal statement is Monroe Township School District will establish comprehensive, inclusive, and innovative learning opportunities for all learners. Again, that statement's an outcome from our strategic planning process. So what are our focus areas in the next five years? Curricular and co-curricular programmatic evolutions. Portrait of a graduate. That is something that we've talked about. That is something that provides the foundation of what our educational programs can look like moving forward, and that is something that is a priority for us to work through with the community. That's a community-based process, very similar to the strategic plan in the sense that our community, the entire township, will be invited to participate. And the end kind of outcome is essentially what it looks like, a portrait, a description of what a graduate of Monroe Township potentially is envisioned for us right now and in the future. Some other areas, an expansion of our orchestra, potentially to an orchestra program in music, digital music and audio in engineering, comprehensive K-12 comp-sci programming. That is something that has exploded since COVID. If you talked to us five years ago, computer science was, there was an interest to it, and it ramped up extremely quickly as an interest, as well as a need in the career fields. That's something we need to focus on. Another area of focus for us is the continuum of programming to support all learners. You've heard us talk in curriculum quite a bit, and you see on the board agendas. We have a lot of resources allocated, mostly federally funded and grant, towards multi-tiered systems of support. Clinical mental health supports, that's a new opportunity we have. Again, it's a grant-funded piece. That is a gap that probably most schools could say that they need to fulfill. Our traditional role as a school district is not to provide clinical support. We are more of a counseling kind of approach in schools. This is a clinical opportunity to help students, and we have a foundation that we're putting in place this year, and the goal would be to sustain and grow that opportunity to support our students. Full Day K is something that's been a conversation, and there's community interest surrounded around that. You'll see a list of tasks and/or projects and initiatives associated with researching and getting that opportunity to a point where we can look to implement it, or, you know, whatever the design study leads us to, if it takes us to a funding opportunity or a referendum or something. You'll see demographic study cycles back again. That's a foundational document that will drive a lot of decisions regarding these programs. Personnel optimization, specifically recruitment, retention, and development. There was a tremendous interest in instructional coaches. That's not something our district currently has as a staff line item, and they are certainly common in our field. So that is something where we would begin to look into, what is the best practice for instructional coaches? What's the optimization of that? And then at some point, if we can financially support bringing on and developing a position like that, it would be welcomed in our district. We want to take a look at our staff evaluation model. We've talked about that. Genesis Human Resources, that module actually has kind of cycled through a little bit already, and that kind of doubles back to the first goal area, where we're looking at optimization of Human Resources Department. And again, you'll see that district advocacy and funding piece cycling through again. If you can go to the next slide. So we thought it was important to prioritize this year. So what can you expect in terms of our priority actions for this year? Under the facilities and operations area, we talked about demographic study. The long-range facilities plan is something that is founded in the demographic study, and it's something that is a part of that facilities and operations focus area. The energy savings and efficiencies, our continued work on ESIP and getting action in terms of taking those projects and putting them in place. District advocacy, again, there's our theme of advocating for ourselves. Under students excelling, the portrait of a graduate. What does that look like? How do we implement that? There are companies that we can bring in to facilitate the process, similar to school boards. So we will be, and we are in the process of identifying funding sources for that, as well as who's the appropriate company or partner to work with in terms of putting that portrait of a graduate in place. I don't believe we would be finished with the portrait of a graduate by the end of the school year, as it is, just like strategic planning, a comprehensive, community-wide piece, many times involves surveys to our parents, surveys to our students, about gathering information about what they envision a portrait or graduate looking like. So we'll get the ball rolling on that, and we will get it in place, and that is something we can anticipate probably finishing up next year. Beginning in the R&amp;D for full-day K and pre-K, that's grounded in the demographic study. That's grounded in after the demographic study, identifying what the scope of work is needed to identify spaces and rooms, or construction projects or renovations, and then budgeting funds for that and planning for that in terms of engineering studies and stuff for the following school year. So that is what we're looking at for pre-full-day K and pre-K this year. And then we continue to expand our continuum of programming. That's everything from our enrichment programming to our music and arts programs, as well as our curricular programs. Then leveraging technology, as you'll see, our tech department has been working on a tech plan for several months. I would expect to see that come through before the holidays. MTHS Technology Refresh, that's another thing we are actively engaging in quotes, in identifying prices for Apple devices, but also, we always look at other devices to see what makes sense, but what meets the needs curriculally of our students, and that's what everything is grounded in. Another piece we're going to take a look at is begin to look at what the technology situation is at MTMS. So we know devices, but what do we envision potentially that looking like in two, three years? Are we looking at a one-to-one? What are we looking at in terms of instructional needs for technology? So we're going to begin that work, and then again, at its core, advocating for ourselves in terms of the district needs. And then, next slide. We also have, and I'm going to cycle back, but we have our strategic plan website. It's current and up to date with all the notes, all the outcomes from all three meetings. At some point tomorrow, this presentation will be uploaded on our strategic plan website, so you have access to this. This is just a summary sample timeline of what we're looking at in terms of what's potentially in that research and development stage, partial implementation and implementing stage. And then, next slide. Again, thank you for the community in participating in the strategic plan development process. We truly value your input. We held true to the work of the committee and using it as a, kind of like we talked about, the North Star, the guiding principles under which we designed and we identified those focus areas we just reviewed. And I invite you to visit our website. Like I said, it has all of the minutes, notes, and outcomes from the three community meetings, and this will be posted up there by tomorrow morning. So, any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Lehman. Does any board member have any questions, or, no, Ms. Bora? Sure.
The members that came out and participated in this process. This is a beautiful document. It's not something that you just, it kind of puts together all the hard work that has been ongoing in different areas and gives it a future direction. I absolutely loved it. I don't see anything missing in this document. And what really excited me was the minute you started talking about the portrait of a graduate. I just want to recall, it was Dr. Chanley, myself, and Mrs. Skirby at the workshop last year, NJSBA workshop last year, and we attended the session, and it was like a light bulb lit in our heads, and we said, we take so much pride in being Falcons, that whatever that presenter was talking about at that point, it just lit such a light bulb. We want that MTSD Falcon to actually have a qualitative, quantitative description that starts in pre-K and goes all the way to high school, that our little babies can associate with, but at the same time, a graduate and seniors can look up to. So the North Star that you kept talking about, Dr. Lehman, it's like giving that North Star, it's like personifying that North Star with a portrait of a graduate. So I'm very excited about that project, and like I said, everything else is work that has been going on, and it needs a direction, and it needs to be prioritized. And as a result of this plan, I see us actually gaining momentum in all of those aspects. So thank you for all the hard work that everybody involved put in this thing. Very appreciated. And I'm looking forward to your committee, Gail, you know, flying with us and actually getting us more momentum in areas where our citizens, our community members can contribute. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any comments, questions? Yes.
I just wanted to add, I completely agree with Mrs. Bora, and as a student who's graduating this year, seeing the future for so many of the younger students, and I have a sister, a younger sister in the middle school, seeing that this is going to be, you know, her future at Monroe Township High School and the middle school, is just amazing. It's a very fast-growing world, and seeing that, you know, this plan has all the content needed and all the plan needed to make it a better and amazing school for her and for all the other students alongside her is amazing, especially like leveraging technology. It's so important in this day and age. So thank you for making this plan.
Thank you. Just like Ms. Bora said, I'm also very excited to see where the Citizens Advisory Committee will now take this, and that we, as a board, can also use this now to help formulate our goals going forward. And thank you to all of the community members that participated in these. It's evident that your input is invaluable, and we really do appreciate everybody who took the time out to come to those meetings. So here we go, five-year strategic plan, everybody. Thank you very much. The last presentation that we have tonight is the board discussion on the budget philosophy.
Okay, it's back to me. So a couple of things I would like to say on the onset of this presentation. Budget philosophy is just that, it's philosophical in nature. It means, what are our expectations? It means what are our expectations, what are our goals, what are our priorities? It usually is not inclusive of numbers and it usually is not embedded in numbers. However, with that being said, the Board of Education entrusted myself, along with my team, Dr. Lehman, Ms. Allen, and of course, always our leadership team, to put the cart before the horse, I'm going to say the term because that's exactly what occurred, and let's get a better idea of where we're going to be financially. The reason I want to explain this to the public is because it's very important that you have an understanding of what information we are working with. So under normal circumstances, over the years, in general, in general, the budget philosophy usually occurs November. And then in March, we usually have our budget presentation based upon the numbers. And the reason why we have that timeframe is because currently, everything that you're about to hear is projections and estimates. For example, we have budget formal defense rounds that include our entire administrative staff. Our supervisors work hand-in-hand with the principals as well as Dr. Lehman and myself and the other directors to come up with their wants, needs, and must-haves. If you remember that term, that was something from the referendum days and we still abide by it. I put it in my confidential and comments all the time because we like it all, but we know we can't have it all, right? So that usually occurs in October, November, and then we have a better idea of the building level needs, inclusive of, when I say building level, it includes curriculum, projects, it includes programming, because everything winds up coming back down to the buildings. So we have not done that yet. We have no state aid numbers. Our state aid, once again, I was talking approximations, was 12,600,000. That was what we got last year. So we are just going with what we had last year. We are hopeful that that will not only remain the same, but will increase. We do not have a magic ball. So we are going with those numbers. Lastly, but very important, Ms. Allen is tasked with the responsibility of taking lots of data and lots of information and plugging it in literally to a formula, within formulas that is a state-driven program. That state program is not even available yet. So you sitting here in the audience at home, and for those that'll go back later on and watch it if you're not watching it live, you have to have an understanding that we want to be transparent to the public. The Board of Education's directive to myself and to me as the leader of the administration is, we want, if possible, not to have to go out for another vote to the public. If possible, we would like to be able to meet our needs and say that we're able to stay within the cap. Everything you're going to hear this evening, and Ms. Allen will do the part with the numbers, is based upon the things that I just listed for you. We do not have state aid for next year. We have not done our defense rounds with our administrative staff. We do not have the program because it is not open yet in order to place the information. What we did was, we took what we do have. We took based upon previous expenditures. We took based upon last year's state aid. We took based upon natural attrition, natural program audit. We are tasked with making sure that we are fiscally and fiduciarily responsible, as we should be, to say what it is that we must have for our children, what are the areas in which we want to continue to excel if possible, and what are the areas in which we see no longer are needed. That's what an audit does. So I wanted to take the time to give this preface so that we all understand that we do not have that crystal ball. We are hopeful that as we move forward throughout the school year, that things remain as we believe they should be, as we hope they will be, and as they are today. Every slide you will see says "projection." Every number that we've utilized is an estimation. And I think it's very important that we make that statement, and I'm recorded saying it, because that is what we did for this presentation. So on that note, I wanted to thank the Board of Education because success is a team effort. We want things supported. We make recommendations based upon what we believe is important for our children and we try to be fiscally responsible and still give our children the best possible education that we can. We're going to go through the numbers and at this time, there is not a recommendation to go out for a question at this time, based upon the current information that we have, based upon the projections and the estimation as of today. The recommendation is not to go out for a question. Next slide. Thank all the members of Board of Education, our student representatives. Next slide. So a budget philosophy, and this is the part that you're used to. This is what you'll normally see usually in November. And I'm not going to read it to you, but basically we establish the annual school budget. It should entail framework, if you'll notice, it says appropriate funding, students. Solid financial base, paramount, students. The last thing a budget philosophy states should be macro-focused rather than micro-focused. Refinement will be required and implemented in future through the rigorous budget process. The rigorous budget process is not only myself, Dr. Lehman, speaking with Ms. Allen, because Ms. Allen is not going to say, "Get rid of this, embrace this, make this more." She's going to work the numbers and we, as the instructional leaders of the district, working in compilation with our administrative team, our instructional leadership team, we're going to say what our wants, needs, and must-haves are, because our end result is the Portrait of a Graduate. So the one thing that you're going to see in a budget philosophy is that we are educationally sound, we're fiscally student planning, excuse me, fiscally prudent in our planning. We want to understand, we want you to understand that we are aware that it's not just the dollars. It is the nickels. It is the pennies. It is. We bear the responsibility to make sure that every single penny, nickel, dime, quarter, dollar, and so on, is spent and is spent wisely. And that is why we like to go through a rigorous process. So we have had some conversations, absolutely, with our administrative team. We have to have an understanding of what programs look like and attrition looks like, but we have not gone through the process that we will go through because we think it's very important and that will occur within the next 45 days. Next slide. So items to consider in budgeting. So you have educational programs, district vision, negotiated salaries, some things are what you call, what's that word when you say that, status? Like you have to have them every year? Fixed costs, thank you. Some costs are fixed costs. That's the term that I always hear Ms. Allen say. One of the things that I would like to bring to your attention, because I really do not want to read to you because I know everybody sees it in front of them. The reason why we wanted the strategic plan to come first and then the budget to come next is because the budget is not just about numbers. It's not, yes, it is important to be fiscally responsible and prudent, but it's about what we need to achieve the vision, to achieve the goals that we set forth for our children, for our students, your children, our students, our children. And that is why we consider these items in our budgeting process, because we always want to give the very best that we can afford to give to our kids. So these are the items in which we look at and we consider in budgeting. Priorities, always, first and foremost, student-staff safety. A must. Very famous philosopher from years ago, and I am not one to throw out names, but I am a Maslow girl. I've been saying it for years. Anybody who was my teacher when I was principal knows that I say this, not because he's someone famous, you could know him, you don't have to know him. It's all about starting at the foundation. If we do not provide a safe environment where our students and our staff feel that safety, nothing else can occur. You have to feel wanted, needed, respected, your opinions considered, and be in a place when you come to school, this building, every one of our buildings, all eight of our schools, our people personnel building, our transportation department. We want all staff and students, for those that have the buildings that have the children in it, to feel safe. Then when you feel safe, we want to maintain our current programs and staff. Are we at a point fiscally to be able to grow the programs? Sometimes. We have some excellent programs that have grown out of grants that then turned into self-sufficient, self-sustaining. Do you always need money? Yes, but the way we get those source funding is in different ways. Currently though, for purposes of this budget, we are very prudent. So if you'll notice, it says maintain. We want to maintain our current programs and staff. And we want to address our capital improvement needs and that's through our wants, needs, and must-haves. We're very excited about moving forward with our Apple Goth project as we partnered through our shared service agreement with the township. We are very excited that we're continuing to move forward and spending that money as we need to make Apple Goth what it needs to be. And now that we have partnered and we were, I'm going to use the word partnership, but we have employed and approved the ESIP program, we will look at ways to be able to address these capital improvement needs without having large and large and large sums of money at all times within our budget. Next slide. And now at this time, I turn it over to Ms. Allen to talk about the categories and the numbers. And like I said, under normal circumstances, this would have been presented in the springtime, late, late, late winter, early, early, early spring. For purposes of being transparent and for purposes at the Directive of the Board of Education as a team, we wanted to give you as much information as we could based upon projections and estimations. Ms. Allen?
So I will probably repeat a lot of the things you just said because it really is important that you're aware that these are estimates. So our goal for tonight was to determine whether we feel comfortable with the preliminary information we have available to us now that we will have to be, that we will be able to balance the budget for '25, '26 without a separate proposal question. This was not meant to be the budget hearing, which will take place in March. We can say that with all the information that we are aware of now, at this point in time, we believe we can balance the '25, '26 budget. It's much earlier than usual, by about five or six months, so there are many assumptions and estimates being made, which would be expected to change as we continue our normal comprehensive budget process. It's very important to note that the NJDOE State Budget Program, where we all, we enter all of our budget data, will not even open up until the end of January. The budget program provides pre-populated amounts, various calculations, edit checks, et cetera, that we do not have the benefit of having available at this point in time. We only do this, estimate some of these numbers with the disclaimer that these are very preliminary projections. So, we will proceed with our normal budgeting process where there will be collaboration and meetings with principals, supervisors, and directors, and budget defense rounds will be held. This process takes several months to complete and there will be many tweaks along the way. With that being said, tonight we are discussing the General Fund. The Special Revenue Fund and the Debt Service Fund will not be presented as they are standalone and have no bearing on our operating budget or the issue of a separate proposal question. Preliminary projected General Fund revenues for '25, '26 total 146.8 million, which is an increase of 4.7 million over the '24, '25 budgeted revenues. This consists of projected General Fund tax levy in the amount of 124.9 million, which is an increase of 4.7 million over the '24, '25 tax levy. This will be explained on another slide. General Fund state aid is budgeted at a flat amount of 12.6 million. The breakdown of state aid will be shown on another slide. Tuition from Jamesburg is budgeted at a flat amount of 4.2 million, subject to calculations based on audited numbers certified by the state. Transportation fees from Jamesburg are budgeted at a flat amount of $256,000, subject to the DRTRS calculations that will be reported to the state and certified by the Transportation Director in November. Federal aid, which consists of semi-reembassments, remains flat in the amount of $83,000. Miscellaneous revenues consist of interest, income, use of building fees, integrated Pre-K tuition, athletic admissions, et cetera, and are conservatively budgeted to remain flat at $850,000. We would anticipate transfers from other funds to be 275,000, which is $125,000 less than the '24, '25 budgeted amount. This represents the Falcon Care and ECE excess. Summer school and after-school enrichment remains flat at 135,000. Excess surplus, which is subject to final audit, is anticipated to be 2.8 million. Excess surplus is just that. It's the excess of the 2% of prior year expenditures as adjusted. The 2% is considered to be the maximum unassigned, undesignated, unreserved fund balance that we are allowed. The excess of the 2% that is not otherwise legally restricted, assigned, or designated, which is excess surplus, must be included as a revenue source in our '25, '26 budget. For the '24, '25 budget, we used an additional $1.7 million of unassigned fund balance to balance the budget. Is our goal to build our fund balance back up to be able to increase our capital reserve fund as well as to establish a maintenance reserve fund. In order to do that, we need to continue to look for ways to reduce spending. To sum this up, the preliminary projected General Fund revenues are anticipated to be 146.8 million, which is 4.7 million or 3.35% increase over '24, '25. The next slide shows the preliminary projected tax levy for '25, '26. We are allowed to grow our tax levy by 2% each year plus any allowable adjustments. Included in our '24, '25 budget was the separate proposal question as approved by the voters. This was a permanent adjustment to the tax levy. The '24, '25 tax levy cap increased by 2% is 122.6 million. Based on the recent release of the state health plan rates increases for '25, we are anticipating a healthcare adjustment for '25, '26 of approximately 2.8 million. The healthcare adjustment applies to districts with a projected increase in healthcare costs that exceed 2% of the pre-budget year. The allowable adjustment cannot exceed the average percentage increase of the state health benefit plan that is determined annually by the Division of Pensions and Benefits, which is 14% for '25. This is calculated by the state budget program. Because the budget program is not available, it has been calculated manually and is subject to change once this program becomes available. This is a very preliminary number at this point and will be recalculated in January with more current information. However, we know that there is an increase in healthcare costs at 14%, which is 12% higher than the 2%. So there will be a healthcare adjustment. Finally, we have state aid and we have, as I said, we are not budgeting for any increase or decrease. We have special education aid, 7.5 million, security aid of 681,000, transportation aid of almost 4 million, and extraordinary aid of 397,000, for a total of 12.6 million of state aid. And then finally, I would like to mention also that the rod grant projects are accounted for outside of the operating budget and the grant is very beneficial to our district in allowing us to complete the Apple Goth projects without any effect on our budget. I can't thank the township enough for their $5 million contribution to these projects. We could not have done it without them. And also of note are the ESIP projects that the district will benefit from by allowing us to get energy improvements without increasing our budget. Mr. Tagg has spent a great deal of time on both the rod grant projects and the ESIP projects. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I just want to take a minute and thank Ms. Allen and Administration. I know this is very, very early in the process, but the Board truly appreciates your efforts and the information that you're able to give us from this. So, thank you very much. I know this was not easy, but we do appreciate it. So, thank you very much. Did the board members have any questions or comments? Ms. Bora?
Of course I have a comment. Thank you. I want to echo what Mrs. Fabiano just said. Ms. Allen, this is a time of the year when you were busy closing the books for the previous school year and we tasked you with this enormous task of projecting and estimating because there was pressure on us to make a decision about next year's budget question. I want to let the public know that the administration, Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Ms. Allen, and everybody in their team has been involved in this process for almost- in their team has been involved in this process for almost four months, every week. They have literally been at it every week, so that they could come to us with a recommendation tonight. And this was the reason I was asking, urging everybody to wait one more month, let them come with their presentation before we make any decisions about the question in April. This has been a huge sigh of relief for the entire board to find out that we are in a place where we don't anticipate going out for a budget question. And I know you have stated it separately and together, but I still want to reiterate, the ESIP program that we got into effect is going to help us meet our numbers for our capital improvements. The, the voters, the community members that helped us pass the question for 2.7 million dollars have contributed immensely to give us more wiggle room in this budget, because not only do we have that permanently in our budget, we also, that we go 2% over that every year. So, it's been a huge help. So it wasn't for nothing that we went out to a question and you guys approved it. It has really helped the future year's budget process. It's a huge relief to know that we are where we are, and I, I, I want to, on behalf of the board as the Finance Committee Chair, thank you and let you know that we understand you don't have a crystal ball. We understand that these are as it stands today, and honestly, that was our ask. As it stands today, how does it look? So, thank you for all your effort. It was a humongous effort, but thank you for doing it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our committee reports. Are there any committees that are wishing to give a report? Mr. Payne?
Yes, thank you. I have two committee reports this evening. I'll be reporting on the Legislative Advocacy and Community Engagement Committee meeting, since Ms. Ratner is not here this evening. We met on September 18th. Board members present were Ms. Ratner, myself, Ms. Sharma, Dr. Peck, Ms. Fabiano, district administrators, Dr. Lehman and Mr. Moraleda. The first items discussed were updates to the district website. Dr. Lehman and Mr. Moraleda provided features we can look forward to, such as an integrated calendar and a more user-friendly format. We can look forward to the website being launched shortly as they continue to work on moving over 500 individual teacher websites while creating a better, better website experience. The next item on the agenda was a recap of the letter we will be sending to our legislators. Dr. Lehman shared that he has been working with Mr. Tagg and other administrators to calculate a rough estimate of the cost of full-day kindergarten based on numbers if we were to implement it today, which was September 18th. We are hopeful that we can get this out to them soon, along with an impact fee resolution, which will be on the NJ SBA Resolution Committee Meeting in December from Monroe Township. A request for support on Bill S2548 and concerns over preschool grant restrictions. Next, we discuss two recent legislative updates. Dr. Lehman shared how the district is handling updates arising with the new Oprah legislation, including a new form that is on the agenda for approval tonight. We also learned that Bill S2837 was signed into law in early September. This bill will allow districts to hold annual elections in November and special elections only if there's a specific need to ask taxpayers, similar to how referendums have been handled in the past. Though the committee would also like to see S2548 passed, which would allow districts to place an additional spending question on a November ballot for the following year, we agreed that this bill enables us to save money by moving the election back to November without eliminating the ability to go out for an additional spending question if needed. The committee also briefly discussed how we can create a better channel of communication with our AACs, which are active adult communities. There was a suggestion of placing an article in each of the newsletters of the various communities, which would include also their HOAs, which could also include those HOAs that are not restrict, age restricted, restricted, excuse me. We also discussed the idea of getting our Jamesburg families to sign up to receive Monroe District emails and news before entering the district, which would allow them to get emails about various activities, such as sporting events and performances. So basically, we want everybody to be informed through this committee, from our legislators all the way down to our community members in Monroe, community members in Jamesburg, and hopefully that can be accomplished, we're working hard on it. I do have my other committee, if you don't mind.
Does anybody have? Any questions? Does anybody have any questions or comments?
That's the end of the Legislative Action Committee.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for the, for the LACE report?
Anybody?
No? Okay, now you can do your next one.
The CAC meeting was held on Tuesday, November, my, September 17th. Present were Dr. Lehman, Mr. Moraleda, Ms. Fabiano, Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Ratner, myself. Mr. Moraleda presented the committee members with a list of applicants for committee membership. We had received, as of that date, 26 applicants for the 12 positions that we are going to be putting on this committee. We're also including three students on the committee, too. That's 15 with the actual committee members who are part of that committee. We extended the date to apply to September 20th. All those who are chosen or not chosen will be notified by September 30th. It was discussed that Dr. Lehman will present the strategic plan to the committee when we meet at our first meeting on October 8th at 7:00 PM. Dr. Lehman and Mr. Moraleda presented the committee, and actually, this is it, that we actually received that evening, which was phenomenal to know, that we're going to be handing that out to the Citizens Advisory Committee members also, so that they know where we want this district to go within the next five years. If you notice, every page says Citizens Advisory Committee. So it looks like we're going to be pretty busy. The meeting dates, for anybody who's listening tonight, for this committee are October 8th, November 12th, and December 10th. For 2025, they're January 7th, February 11th, March 18th, and April 8th. And thank you, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Payne, Citizens Advisory? No? Okay, any other committees wishing to give a report? Ms. Alvarez?
The Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, September 18th, 2024. In attendance were Dr. Lehman, Mr. Piero, Mrs. Fabiano, and Mrs. DePayne. There were three resignations, all of which were certificated staff. Three exit interviews were conducted, and of those three, two resignees accepted positions in another school district, and one resignee listed their reason for resigning was to stay home with family. The administration continues to work diligently to fill vacant positions. Thirteen of the current vacancies are for school bus drivers. Bus drivers shortages continue throughout the state. It's not just here in Monroe. Also on tonight's agenda for approval is the job description for Supervisor of Transportation. The description is being amended to include additional responsibilities. This concludes my report.
Any questions for Ms. Alvarez? Okay, do you want to do your next one?
Policy didn't.
Policy didn't have a committee, so no policy report. Any other committees?
I can go to two of mine. I'll start with the Finance and Shared Services Committee minutes. Committee met on September 18th. The first item discussed was the Attorney invoice for the month of July for Porzio and the month of August for Bush Law Group. We reviewed and had no questions. The committee then reviewed the bill list, which at that time of the meeting was approximately $8.9 million, with an addendum expected closer to the Public Board meeting. Clarifications were sought on a few checks for ID purposes, sports equipment purchase, and legal services. Next on the agenda was a software proposal for the Genesis module for HR. This will cost the district $25,000 for the first year with setup, and then $5,000 every year thereafter. This has been discussed by the board in the past year, but a decision was not made. Dr. Lehman shared how our district is still very manual in a lot of our HR processes, using Excel spreadsheets for data entry for many of the individual employee data. This centralized automated system is commonly used by many districts around us for a very long time. Presently, we use a tool called CSI, which handles these HR tasks and payroll, and the proposal was to continue using CSI for proposal, for payroll, but transfer the HR part to Genesis. While the committee agreed that we must get this module, the decision has been postponed for another month to get some clarity on the cost of bringing even the payroll to Genesis, or the possibility of doing that, and eliminating an additional tool. We would like to see if this would serve our systems and staff better while bringing cost savings with consolidation. So that's where this software proposal stands right now. No decision, no recommendations from the committee to the board. Next, the committee discussed the shared services agreement between the Township of Monroe and the MTBOE, due to an issue brought up in the last board meeting about the gap between the understanding of security terms in the shared service agreement and the regulations requirement for security in our board policy and Regulation 7510. As per the agreement, we do not charge the township for security and expect them to ensure safety of the occupants and the structures while they are using it. But the regulation requires a minimum of one security guard paid by the Board of Ed during the use of the buildings. The committee has requested the administration to have the lawyer review this agreement and suggest modifications to Regulation 7510, which could then be brought to the Policy Committee. Lastly, two renewals were discussed that were related to the cheer team and the swim team practices. Any questions?
No questions? I will say that we did receive the updated information from Mr. Weiss, and that's going to be discussed next month, that policy with regards to 7510.
Thank you.
Do you want to do your next report?
Can I take the curriculum?
Yeah.
The curriculum committee met on September 17th. The agenda for the September meeting, just like August, was packed with 17 curriculum documents that were discussed and are on agenda for approval today. Dr. Rozell started with this Grade 6 Spanish curriculum, which has now been added as one of the four cycles that the students go through in the first year of middle school. This course will be taught for one marking period. The other three cycles are computers, general music, and industrial arts. Only students that are in chorus do not get the opportunity to do the cycles. Dr. Lehman shared that any sixth grade, any sixth grade chorus parents wanting their child to get a similar Spanish exposure in sixth grade can reach out to the administration, and something could be worked out to ensure their needs are being met. Dr. Rozell then discussed the Honors Latin III curriculum and shared the overall structure of the Latin program in our high school and the excellent opportunity that our students have in this department. Three language arts curriculums were then discussed, Advanced Grade 7 ELA, Advanced Grade 8 ELA, and AP Language and Composition. Dr. Rozell shared the qualifications and the level of content in these high rigor language art courses. Next, she presented the Media Literacy Curriculum for kindergarten through second grade and grade three through five. This curriculum includes the Makerspace learning that our students are exposed to in their elementary years. Mrs. Gaskell, after that, shared the detail, shared in detail the Grade 2 Math, Algebra 1, and Honors Algebra II curriculum. She highlighted the updates were based on the 2023 New Jersey State Learning Standards. She also explained the progression through the various levels of high rigor math courses we offer and how some become prerequisites for advanced science classes. Following that, Mrs. Drush shared two AP documents for AP Physics 1 and the Calculus Intensive AP Physics C, and highlighted all the prerequisites and the content differences between the two. Mr. Snyder then presented four documents. He started with Elementary General Music in Grade 3, which is the introductory class before the students start band and chorus in fourth grade. He next discussed a very popular elective in high school, Piano 1, which is first of the three such classes offered in high school, and this helps meet a graduation requirement for five credits in performing arts. Next, he shared the highlights of a very interesting pop music history class. Lastly, he discussed the structure and content of the strength and conditioning course, which so far was only offered to juniors and seniors. For starting this year, we are now offering it to sophomores, sophomores as well. Option 2 has allowed for this to happen. Next on the agenda was the Athletics Emergency Action Plan, presented by Mr. Stephen Brandica. This comprehensive plan is the first of its kind for the district and will be reviewed every year going forward for any changes required. Various parts of these procedures and protocols sat in multiple documents in our system, but it helps to have one go-to document for any type of athletic emergencies, and that can now be used to train all involved departments, athletics, security, facilities, et cetera. This plan lists protocols for injuries of several types. It talks about weather-related emergencies, shows the fastest route to all of our fields from nearby police and EMT locations, and it also addresses the locations of AED. And as shared by the AD, while putting this plan together, they determined the need for two outside building locations for AED, which are not locked and are now included in the plan. As usual, despite the extra 15 minutes that the committee got this month, it's a one-and-a-half-hour committee now. We still ran out of time for Mr. Moraleda, and he only got five minutes for his update on enrichment programs. He shared how we have hit the ground running with the advanced enrichment programs, which are qualification-based entry and offered during the school day, which includes the morning zero period in all three upper elementary schools. This year, we will be offering a large variety of fee-based after-school enrichment programs, and the committee discussed how those would work. Mr. Moraleda shared that we may not have enough time to do prep class for the October SAT test date, but there are, they are working towards starting the fee-based SAT prep classes for future test days. The district is in the middle of a website overhaul, but the administration is making all efforts to have all enrichment program updates and information accessible to the community members through the old site and our social media pages. That concludes the curriculum report. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Bora? Okay, thank you. The last one, Mr. Piero.
Building and grounds transportation. So the committee met on September 18th. In attendance was Mr. Tagg, Ms. Fabiano, myself, Ms. Ratner, Ms. Bora, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Selby, and Dr. Claw from the high school. We talked about several different things. Mr. Tagg informed us that day that administration confirmed that the flashing lights in front of the high school for the crosswalk, that we will be transforming them to solar, and on that day, we received them, and I believe they've started working on them. So we will have solar flashing lights. We had lights inside the ground when you crossed, and over years, they go out, they go out, they go out. So, Mr. Tagg came up, and also the township is doing the same flashing lights in front of Mill Lake School and the rec center for the crosswalks there. So, that's under the installation plan right now. The Apple Gar 1936 Building Roof Replacement Project. Mr. Tagg informed us and the committee that the project is substantially complete, and they're pleased with the performance of the contractor. We're working through the punch lists and warranty inspections, and the project finished on time and under budget. So the first phase of the raw granite Apple Gar School is complete. The next part of the Apple Gar School New Electric Service Upgrade Project. Administration shared photos of the construction work and emphasized the complexity of the conduit installations that are ongoing. The project is proceeding well, and provided JCPN L delivers us the new service transformer by June 25th, that project can be completed successfully on time also. Just so parents know, any work being done at Apple Gar School, there will be no contractors working inside the school during the school day. A lot of the work will be conducted at night in the HVAC projects and stuff, which we're going to talk about next. So, the administration also advised us that the architects completed review of the bids. There were 13 bidders picked up bid packages, and eight bids were received. They were comparative bids. Right now, the bids are with the attorney's office for attorney review, and once that's under attorney review, we'll proceed there with that project. The way it looks now, though, the installation of the HVAC is going to be about 500,000 over budget from what we anticipated, but we will be getting 300,000 state aid, which will go for that, towards that we could use. And also, we're hoping that the other projects, like the roof project, will come in under budget, and that money will make the other 200,000 up, but we won't know at this time. Any additional in the forthcoming budget, if needed, we could put in, or the leach purse monies. Therefore, hopefully, the way it's looking at with Apple Gar School, Mr. Tagg has everything on schedule to be completed in the timeframe he had given us. The next part is the ESIP project update. That's the efficiency project with Honeywell. Administrator shared a draft resolution that will be presented at tonight's board meeting. The resolution provides administration to work with Honeywell. The resolution provides administration to work with Honeywell to secure quotes for solar power purchase agreements. This information will guide decision-making towards potentially proceeding with solar projects under the ESIP. This does not commit the board to any contract or any cost at this time. The resolution has been reviewed by the Bush Law Firm and is currently in review with our bond counsel. And the last part of tonight is the school opening transportation. So we had some issues with transportation. The opening of school, Dr. Lehman provided an overview of the school opening, indicated that although we were a few minor issues with primarily contracted drivers with confusion on day one, by day two, there was a big improvement, and it appears now that we are proceeding well with transportation. We're adequately staffed at this time, and our athletic events are being adequately supported with school busing so far this year. The transportation did have a problem and has worked with the Ed Service Commission to address root conflicts with our magnet school students. So apparently, there was issue with the pickups of a lot of our magnet school students, and the administration, along with the Ed Service Commission and the Transportation Department, has worked diligently, and I believe now every issue they had with the magnet schools is corrected, and we have no more transportation issues. But just so we know, as of this time, we're not doing any double routes. It's all single routes, and keep our fingers crossed that, you know, we were able to maybe get a few more bus drivers, and everything will run smooth through the school year. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Payne?
I have a question. Mr. Pira, you said the magnet schools had an issue of busing. Now, does that include any children that are going out of districts, say Parochial, and all, any other different schools?
No.
No, it was only the magnet schools.
Only the magnets?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And for those who don't know, the magnet schools are the vocational schools. They changed it from VOTech to magnet. A lot of people ask what's a magnet school. They had changed the name.
Any other questions? Okay, then we're going to go to the next item on our agenda, which is our public forum for agenda items only. Any member of the public wishing to speak, you have four minutes to do so. Please come up and state your name and municipality for the record.
Good evening. Chrissy Scurby, Monroe Township. I want to thank the administration for the presentation this evening for the budget philosophy. In Dr. Chanley's words, this was putting the cart before the horse. It's never been done this way, a budget philosophy meeting like this. I just want to ask, does the budget include any new student programs as of today in that budget that you, the numbers that you presented? Does that include increases or new programs for students?
So what we did is we projected the current year's budget, and as we go through the budget defense process, that's when we'll, there's programs that fall off, programs that may be new, but we haven't gotten down to the detail of program by program.
So we don't know if we're going to have new programs?
We're looking at everything.
Okay.
Everything is being the same as it is this year.
And you said you didn't have budget defense rounds?
Correct.
And you do not have the state numbers for state aid currently? And you do not have the township ratable numbers, which were very significant last year when we did the budget, correct? That hasn't come out yet, Ms. Allen? That comes out in February?
Yeah, around there, yeah.
Okay. And you don't have the state program to utilize, to put the numbers in, that actually calculates the budget and the adjustments, correct? I think you said that you didn't use that?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. So, thank you for your words of warning that this is really a guesstimate right now, based on some numbers that you have, but largely, the numbers that impact the budget, you don't have, and you did not use, you don't have that to figure out what you have. So here's my question. If this guesstimate doesn't work out for you, and we have a deficit like we did last year, what will you do? Will you make cuts to the budget, or will you go out to the community for a vote? What is the Board of Education committing to? Because that is what a budget philosophy is. The board directs the administration during the budget philosophy what they want to see done. The board says, like we did last year as a board, we do not want to see massive cuts. Therefore, when we couldn't stay under the 2% cap, we went out to the community. So truly, what is this board committing to? Are you asking the administration to come under budget and make cuts? Or are you saying, increase our programs, don't cut anything, and let's see where we are and go out for a question to the community?
The board is not making a commitment at this time to anything. We asked the administration to come up with a philosophy based on the information that they had, so that we can make a decision on moving forward with an April election if we felt necessary, or if we felt that it would be okay to go back to November. Given the legislation that has come out, the board, there is a resolution on the agenda to move the election back to November, and we will continue talks with the administration to see where we stand.
Well, see, that's the problem. It's a board philosophy, and the Board of Education members are supposed to come up with their philosophy. What do you want to see? Are you willing to?
And the administration, the administration has said that they have, at this point, are saying that they will not be going out for a question. That's where we are right now.
It's not the administration's decision.
That's where we are right now.
I understand, but you don't understand your role as a board member, because that is not the role of the administration to decide whether or not.
The administration gave the presentation that we asked them to put forth, and we are making a decision based on the information that they have.
Which is none of the numbers, none of the projections from the state.
We're going with the information that they have.
No, that's fine. So I'm just asking again, is this board committing to not making cuts to programs as presented right now? Right now, you said everything stays as is and there's no cuts. If the numbers, the estimates, are not, by we get to March, and they're not there, and now you come and say, we cannot stay under that. Are you committing to not cut programs?
Your time is up, thank you.
Are you committing to not cut programs?
Your time is up, thank you.
That speaks volumes.
My name is Dominic Torito. I don't live in town, but my children do. I guess since she ran out of time, I'll ask, and to follow up, philosophy is just a big nothing if the numbers don't really match. It's just a big proposal of nothing with fake numbers and fake ideas. And the budget philosophy, Dr. Chanley, we're not including numbers. You said that. You said, "We need our wants, our needs, and our must-haves, and we have to start at the foundation." You had a lot of things up on that screen in the presentation that cost hundreds and thousands and millions of dollars, and not one of them, until it got, like, closer to the bottom, was full-day kindergarten. And if you want to start at the foundation, you know, you don't build a house on sand. So why is that not a higher priority? Also, Mr. Payne, I wanted to know if you could expand on your committee meeting about full-day kindergarten, what was actually discussed. I wasn't there at the meeting, and if you could maybe fill us in with some dates about the committee meeting?
I don't know. So Mr. Payne chairs the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Right.
The Citizens Advisory is a committee that will be formed of members of the public that will use the strategic plan to develop a form of action.
Right. I understand, but it was something she brought up, and that's why.
Full-day kindergarten is mentioned in the strategic plan. It may be a topic of discussion in the committee.
Right, it was mentioned in the strategic plan. I understand that.
So it may be a discussion in the committee, but the committee hasn't put anything forth with regards to full-day kindergarten.
Which committee? I read two.
Yeah, the first one. Yeah, the legislative action. Thank you.
Okay, that's a different one. Yeah, the Citizens Advisory Committee will be meeting for the first time with the chosen members on October 8th.
Okay.
So we can't answer anything about kindergarten.
And that's not open to the public?
It, well, it's open to the public to join, to sit out in the audience, but members of the public, yes.
Right.
All of our committee meetings are open to the public.
Yeah, all of them are open to the public. The other one was the Legislative Action Committee. So there was nothing discussed on kindergarten in there.
Was there a piece of legislation that we had spoken about? But we can get back to you on that.
Yeah, we'll have to get back to you. She mentioned a few bills.
Mr. Payne, Dr. Lehman can also talk on it.
Yeah, Dr. Lehman.
So you brought up the kindergarten piece. The board is putting together a letter to give the legislators about estimated costs of implementing something now.
Okay, I guess that's where I was.
For advocacy of, this is the kind of number we're looking at.
Do we have any ballparks or not really?
The last time we pulled a number together, it was approximately 15 to 16 million dollars.
15, 16 million dollars.
So we're updating that number based off of this year.
Okay. I had another question. As far as the legislative, you're going to, you need, we need money. I mean, this whole meeting, you know, has been about, we need money, we don't have money, we want money. How do we get the money? Through the Legislative Action Committee? Or, I mean, asking legislators, asking money, because we just went through an hour and a half of all these big plans about how great everything is going to be, really just a big pat on the back, and there's no money, and there's no plan to get anymore. So we were talking about, we're going to get electric school buses, a half a million dollars apiece, that don't work in January, but we don't have full-day kindergarten. I think we're putting the cart before the horse, over and over, with what actually matters to the people, the constituents of the people who are right here on this stage.
Do you want me to address that to CAC or no?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I stand by what I said. I am a proponent of full-day kindergarten, just like I am a proponent of full-day preschool. But we have a responsibility, as administrators, as leaders, to work alongside with our board to say what we also have a responsibility to. You cannot be responsible to put in a new full-day kindergarten program until you meet the needs of what we currently have. We are not going to, I would not be my recommendation, let me say that, because they vote, I recommend. It is, would not be my recommendation to remove current programs that exist, to remove current staffing that exists, to remove current needs for certain initiatives or projects or updates on buildings to put in kindergarten. Kindergarten is important, 100%, and it may wind up being, as we work through the research and development as part of the strategic plan, that we wind up going out for a referendum. I don't know. But all I'm saying is, and I know I was a teacher first and foremost, I understand how important kindergarten is, but the bottom line is, we are tasked with the responsibility of putting together a budget. We were tasked with the responsibility. We put the cart before the horse because we didn't have a choice. We wanted to be able to have something that we can at least move forward with. It may be projections, it may be estimations, but you have to start somewhere. Because if we knew, based upon the conversations that we had and the numbers that worked, we were $5 million over, and I'm just coming up with a number out of nowhere. Of course, my recommendation would be, President, Fabiano, board members, we need to go out for a question. At this current time, that is not the case. Kindergarten is not something we could just throw out there and say, we want kindergarten. As we continue through the strategic plan, because we know it's very important. It may be something you won't see for five years, it may be something that we see in three years. One of the things, and I think this pertains to what Mr. Payne was saying.
I'm aware that it won't be tomorrow.
Right.
I get that.
Right. But I just want to end with one thing, which is so important. One of the things that we noticed is, they have lots of money in Trenton to give now for pre-K. So when we said, okay, we want your money, we'll take the money, and we reached out to say, how do we get some of that money? And their answer was, well, you don't have full-day kindergarten. So we don't have full-day kindergarten because we can't afford it, but you're not going to give us the extra money that's available for pre-K. So I think one of the things that we'd like to say, and we would like to talk to our legislators about, is what about the money now? Because everybody except for how many of us don't have full-day kindergarten? How about you say, you know what, Monroe and District X, District Y, District M also does not have full-day kindergarten. Those monies that they're allotting now to create a full-time pre-K for those districts that have full-time kindergarten, we'd like some of that money. So that's where I think the action group comes into place, where the Legislative Action Committee, I think that's important. Because I don't want to say that we don't have any money, that would not be a true statement. We are a district that is trying very hard to be fiscally responsible and to look at, as I said, the pennies and the nickels, and to be as prudent as possible. But we still have a budget that is comprehensive and includes a lot of opportunities for all of our children.
I don't mean to say that you're not making every dollar count.
Sir, your time is up, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't mean to say that you're not making every dollar count, but it's something that's important. And I understand you make recommendations, but the people that really recommend, the people that vote, and the people that live in this town, and everybody I talk to that has children that are my children's age, it's always the topic of conversation.
Thank you.
Brian Fabiano, Monroe. It's been a few months. So I'll say a couple of things. First and foremost, I don't think we should undermine our administration to get paid a lot of money to come up with a budget. And what we saw tonight, although preliminary, we have experts that have seen this budget year over year after year, and I know Ms. Allen has been here a long time working on this, so I think we know where we need to get. But to come up here, I mean, and it's expected, you know, when you lose, you're going to come here every month and try to undermine the board and, you know, just be resentful for your loss, but the taxpayers, you know, they spoke when they voted. But this administrative team has a job, and they came here tonight and showed what is preliminary and what you believe can be done, and I think that's responsible on your part for the community. This past year was the first time in over a decade that we had to go out to the public to ask for more money. So to sit here, any of you, all 10 of you who are elected, nine that are Monroe-elected, to sit here and think year after year after year, you can go out to the taxpayers because there's a couple people or one person that comes here for whatever known reason, you know, was just disgruntled, to think that you can go out every year and ask for more money, you should just resign. It's ridiculous. You have a fiscal responsibility to balance the budget. You see what's going on in all the towns around us, East Brunswick, South Brunswick. Thank God we're not in the position that they're in, because they're down millions. You guys actually got more this year. So let's try to live within our means. It may be preliminary, but even if we get to the point where we can't make it happen, there may be cuts that Dr. Chanley, Mrs. Allen, you can find, and it doesn't have to be teachers. There is always something that you can tighten it up a bit. So that's my first point. My second point is, when I look at the agenda, one thing that always has stuck out to me, and I've talked about it, well, before that, kindergarten. I know it's been talked about. I've been talking about kindergarten for the longest time here in Monroe. We have to stop kicking the can down the road. We have to come up with a plan to make it work. How do we get there? And if we can cut other programs, you know, not, you know, other things to be able to make it happen or tighten it up to make it happen, let's do it. Let's talk about, let's not just have these meetings and talk, we're going to bring kindergarten, let's brag about the money we make in ECE. Let's figure out a way to bring kindergarten. We could have brought kindergarten last year on the budget, that we went out for more money. It could have been another question. It wasn't. It wasn't done. But let's stop talking about it, but actually make it happen. The last thing I wanted to talk about is, and I've talked about this before, when I see a agenda and there's a word retroactive, it always piques my interest in what is being asked from the board to go back and approve that may have been already, you know, accomplished or done in the district. And I know a lot of that is when you look at resignations or people go out for family leave, but there's an agenda item here, AY. So this question is for Dr. Chanley. It's recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, the board approved the following back-to-school night supervision at MTMS at two hours per night, blah, blah, blah. Can you explain what that is and why that was done retroactively?
So first and foremost, as our attorney has said, and he can share this, it is, I have the ability to do that, so it is being done appropriately. I received a document on September the 4th.
So before my time runs out, I'll let you answer.
Go ahead.
So can you, I'd like to know where your limitations are when it comes to approving things retroactively? Because we've sat, I've sat in this meeting for many months, and last year and the year before, and I remember one thing precisely.
Your time is up.
Okay, right, but I remember one thing precisely, and that was they wanted to fire the previous board business administrator because he was approving things retroactively. So can you tell me where the limits are when it comes to retroactive approvals?
So I want to just clarify that. I think that's important. He was spending money by allowing checks to be cut.
Okay, so can you tell me what this is then, and where your limitations are?
Yeah, but I would like to stop because your time is up, so I'll just answer.
So go ahead.
No, it's not a back and forth. Your time is up.
You have my questions.
Go ahead. Your time is up. Shall I answer? Or are you not answering?
Oh, well, of course I'll answer. So something was brought to me from the Personnel Committee. As you may have heard, everybody stated who was present. I was ill, very ill, so I wasn't present in any of the meetings. So I showed the respect and courtesy to the Personnel Committee to respond to exactly what this was. So apparently, and this is maybe the third or fourth year that it's been approved, the middle school has three or four teachers, and I think in this particular case, it might be four teachers. be four teachers, at the hourly rate of forty-six or forty-five, don't quote me, and change. And what happens is, we ask parents to please come, we want you to be at back-to-school night, however, it's recommended, if possible, you leave your children home because we want the attention. So apparently, I guess, under the principalship of Dr. Higgins, because this was something that was changed, because I guess more and more parents were bringing the children, they had teachers working to supervise the kids, because as was stated by our attorney, you cannot have children in a class mura in a building if they're not, if they're not accompanied by their parents, without having a certificated individual. So when I saw that this occurred, I immediately reached out to Mr., to Dr. Higgins and said, can you tell me what this is, and why this is being proved retroactively? I said to my secretary, can you give me the document? I received it on September the fourth, I signed it on September the fifth. As we know, there was no Board of Education meeting prior to that. I asked him why it was retro, and why it wasn't provided to me in advance, and he said, this was a situation in which we weren't sure of the date, so we couldn't post the position over the summer, teachers did not go on their email, nor are they required because they're ten-month employees, and therefore, that is why it became retro. I take my job very seriously, and I take being responsible prudently and fiscally responsible, and I do not like being compared to the previous Business Administrator, I just want to make that statement clear. And due to that fact, I go ahead, and I make sure that I examine and read everything that I sign. It was brought to my attention that they had three back-to-school nights, the last back-to-school night, which had two teachers' names on it, the other ones had already performed their duties, was going to occur. I reached out to Dr. Higgins, and I said, moving forward, I do not think this is a fiscally responsible opportunity for us, I, rather, I think this is a responsibility for us to be fiscally responsible, and I don't think it's something that we should continue. He said, absolutely, Dr. Chanley, that would not be a problem. I was gonna pull the recommendation from it. If I would have pulled the recommendation from it, that means, A, the people that did the work would have already had to be paid anyway, and B, those individuals that had set, separated time to do this, would then not be afforded to be paid for something that they had scheduled for. So I made the recommendation as the Superintendent, that it should be moved forward, however, I do heed that that is something that should not have occurred. We have a fiscal responsibility, however, when something does occur, that the teachers, or whomever the staff members, do get paid. That is not the same situation that occurred, and I'm not gonna go into any further conversation of detail, regarding what was going on previously. I take my job very seriously, and I don't like any comments that would ever assume that I'm doing something unethically. Since I have become Superintendent as acting in regular, we have saved more money in this district, we work very hard to make sure that we eliminate things that are not, that are frivolous and should not be going on, and now I am finished, thank you very much.
Great, so you-
Madam President, respectfully, Mr. Fabiano's time is over.
Your time is up.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
That is not what I said, but thank you, thank you very much for your comments. Thank you very much for your comments.
Come back to the next section.
Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, Pop Allen, so I'm Monroe Township. I just want to first thank everybody who worked on the strategic plan, and the budget philosophy, a lot of work, and very much appreciate the kind of things that all sound effective organizations do. Just comment on the strategic plan, and it was difficult to see the slide, maybe I just missed it, but, you know, one of the things I usually look for in a strategic plan is to try to see some measurable, independent, objective data that kind of talks about where you are today, versus where you want to be in five years at the end of the strategic plan. So I'm hoping that that's kind of in there, because I've been trying to understand the goals you had up there, it seemed to me a little vague in terms of, the things that everybody in this room might have a difference of opinion on in five years, whether you made those goals or not, but if you say, we want to be ten percent better in our graduation rate, or fifteen percent better at this, we want to be in the top ten percent of districts in New Jersey, something that's measurable and objective, that we could all understand, just ask you, give us some consideration to that. As far as the budget philosophy, completely understand all the qualifications, perfectly reasonable, understandable. I would just say, and I apologize for making more work for you, Ms. Allen, but you really want to try to marry now up to the strategic plan, and it was just at a high level, to try to take a look out at where you think you're going financially, because the question, you answered one question, sorry, for right now, you don't think you have to do anything, but the other question is, when will you have to? And as the other speaker noted, reasonable, you know, while Ms. Allen's doing all the work, reasonable for the board members to think about, you know, when are you gonna go to the public, and when you're not, you know, what are the parameters for that? And something, you know, you may have a parent talk about tonight, but something you should be thinking about, and really looking at your strategic plan, and looking where you think you're going, so you know when you may have to go to the public, and what are you gonna go to them for. But, a lot of good work, and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close the pub, oh, this is for agenda items only, yes. We'll close the public forum, our next item on the agenda is our Assistant Superintendent's report.
Sure. I'll make it quick, because we had a, a lot of talking to do earlier in the meeting, about good stuff that we have in front of us. And I put this in one of our weekly emails to the board, but I just want to recognize our music program at the high school. The Foundation for Music Education has announced their awards for 2024, and for the first time in school history, the Monroe Township High School Honors Wind Ensemble and Honors Percussion Ensemble have been named state-level winners. The Foundation for Music Education annually- The Foundation for Music Education annually recognizes outstanding performing ensembles from across the country through their mission to support the advancement of music education. Congrats, congrats for our music program, and the entire vertical teaching band staff is accomplishment. And we just want to say, you know, welcome back to the staff, we are up and running every day, I feel like we sprint faster than we did the day before, and that's the time of year, September is extremely busy for parents, and students, and our student athletes, and us as board members, and sitting at the table here. So, we keep our head up, we will keep forging forward, we're gonna have a quick turnaround to all of our October meetings, we've been talking about, you know, agenda committees are not next week, but the following week, so we're already starting that cycle again, and we look forward to an excellent school year, and good luck to all of our students this year, and we look forward to celebrating your accomplishments as we move throughout the school year. Thank you.
Dr. Chanley, you're next, sorry, Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, President Fabiano. So I want to start off, as I always do, with our retirements. We are pleased to wish well on one of our bus drivers, Martin Poco. He has driven our children, your children, for sixteen years in this district. I always make the statement that we wish our Falcons a fabulous journey on their next segment of their, of their life, as they go into retirement, and we hope that he has health and happiness in that journey. On that note, I will begin with my recommendations. First, under Personnel, under the ten-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached Personnel Items A through AF.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments, discussion? Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Under Personnel, nine-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached Personnel Items AG through BL.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments, discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
I'm gonna say yes, and abstain on AY.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving forward. For Board Action, ten-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached Board Action Items A through L.
Motion.
Second.
Any comments or discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Zeich, Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Under nine-member vote, under Board Action, is recommended the board approve the attached Board Action Items M through R.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hey, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
If I may, as I conclude my report, I would like to thank all of the staff members, and all of the leaders in our district, principals, supervisors, assistant principals, directors, for their hard work, and their diligence in opening our schools, including our custodians, secretaries, maintenance workers. We, success is always a team effort. We could not provide the fabulous opening that we've had if we did not have everybody working together as a team. Transportation as well, transportation is always that one area in which we have some hiccups, but we really try and work diligently, because we want our children to be able to get to and from school safely. We had a lot of activities occur, I did visit all of the buildings, and a lot of activities did occur for Patriot Day. Nine eleven is something that should never be forgotten, you know, not because, just because I'm a New Yorker, but in general, you know, we had truly many, many people that were patriots, that wanted becoming sick, that lost their lives, that lost loved ones. It's something that can easily become really far from our thoughts because of the age of our children, and a lot of our children weren't even born. So I really do appreciate, and I know Ms. Dross is our supervisor, that provided a plethora of resources, I do appreciate that it's something that we continue to show the courtesy and respect to in our schools, because we all live here together in the United States of America, and I, and I do really believe that's very important. For those that celebrate the Rosh Hashanah holiday, next week is the Jewish New Year, so I wish you Allah Shano Tova, for those that celebrate, and I thank you very much for the continued support. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next item is our Business Administrator's report.
Okay, just to mention, two things on my report. One is the, the additional state aid for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year of three hundred thousand dollars, there is a resolution approving that, to be used for capital improvements. And the other is the resolution to change the election date to November. So with that, it's recommended that Board Action Items A through O be approved by consent roll call by a ten-member vote.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Bora?
Yes, I, I have a few questions on the addendum, Ms. Allen.
Okay.
The first two checks, zero, one, three, six, six, and zero, one, three, six, seven, are those part of the rod grant payments? They're big, big numbers, and that's why I just needed to get some idea.
No. Zero, one, three, six, six, is for custodial supplies, and that is, that is for the year, for the school year, they order-
It's a, this entire school year?
Supplies for the, for the school year.
That's a typical amount?
Mm-hmm. One, three, six, seven is, is part of the rod grant for the partial roof replacement.
Okay. And then there is a, there was a vendor in here multiple times, Mobili's Modular Space and TMS, there are two, I think there are two checks to that. Could you explain what that is, please?
Yes, that's for the trailers at the middle school.
Is this, are we doing any specific work right now on them?
That's the rent, that is what we pay a month.
Oh, this is, so, okay.
We pay the eight thousand, eight thousand dollars a month.
Both of those are, so two trailer, two rent numbers, different numbers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I also, if I may, Madam President, I had two comments on the agenda items. One was on the ESIP resolution, that's here, I want to commend Mr. Tagan and his team, who are working diligently through this, and putting the first resolution in place, and I know this is not gonna cost us anything, but it could result in a project that would, that would be climate-friendly, and help get us some money to fund other projects. And my next comment is on the resolution to move the elections, and this is, I just want to say this before I vote on it, to address some of the concerns that have come from the public. Ideally, I would have liked this, this election date change to happen later, maybe in January, by the time you would have had a better idea with the dated numbers, and we would be a hundred percent confident, we don't need another, you know, election that's gonna cost the Board of Ed, and not, you know, not the municipality. But, given what has been presented on the budget today, and given that there is a new law in place that allows us, in the event that things don't go, things completely go against whatever we have projected and estimated, estimated, we have the opportunity to go out for a question. At this point, we are not seeing that for the year twenty-five, twenty-six, and so I feel confident to go ahead and support this resolution, even though I would have personally liked it to come later. But my stand as a board member, my promise to the community of not allowing program cuts is still true. So if the worst imagined scenario plays out, and we are short of money, and the administration does put up cutting programs, I will be the first voice saying, we have the opportunity to go out to a question. Yes, some members of the community think it's a shameful act to do, but in my opinion, there are taxpayers in this town, and I want to emphasize this, there are people that live in Monroe that pay a lot of taxes, and have a right to decide whether or not that tax money can be increased by a small percentage to support continuing the standard of education we are providing to our students today. Many of those community members cannot even vote, but they're paying the taxes just as much as others. I don't think it's a decision to take lightly about making program cuts. When you compare us to other districts, other districts have been getting far more money than us, and unfairly so. We have managed in less money by burdening our taxpayers, but we have provided the level of education that we have here in Monroe, and there is no reason to not give the public a chance to decide whether the program should be cut. I understand our fiduciary responsibility as board members, which we perform in every board meeting, and every resolution, every little thing that we approve, but that's a big question, making big cuts to programs. So, at this point, it's looking good, my fingers are crossed, we don't have to worry about this, but worst-case scenario, if something happens, the law allows us to go out to a question without an April election. We can go out to a question, and hopefully by the time the next law will pass, and in November, when we go out for school board election, we can add the question for future years. So, to address Mrs. Skirby's concern, my commitment to the committee, community has not changed. I will never support cutting programs to, to manage the money that we have. I would rather go knock on the doors of our legislatures, continue to advocate for money, and then come to the community members and ask them for money. We have that opportunity, and so right now, we don't have to sign up to spend more money. I'm gonna support this resolution, and I also want to emphasize that one of the things that we went back and forth with, with Mr. Weiss, and Ms. Fabiano was involved in that conversation, this does increase the board term for board members, myself, Ms. Fabiano, and Ms. Ratner, and I think everybody else, eventually, everybody else. else, eventually everybody else. So I, when I went and fought for the April elections, I increased my term by three months. Now, when this changes, I will have to serve a whole year more than I was elected to serve. It was a major concern for me. I did bring it up to Mr. Weiss to understand that there are no legalities against it. You know, it's not unethical, and he confirmed for me as per the current statutes, current laws, we are within the law. So it is going to be a natural collateral of changing the election date, whether or not I'm happy about, about another year of serving here. So I just wanted to comment on that before I voted yes on this resolution. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a, if I may. Just, again, I'd like to make two points. One is, number one, the budget was preliminary. That's all it is. And I think we're making more out of it than we really should. We're just giving you additional information. But I would also tell you that no one wants to cut programs. I don't believe anyone in this board wants to cut programs. But we also know that there's a lot of money out there in terms of grant money. Many of the districts, North Brunswick, for example, they use grant money to fund a pre-K program. All we need to do is go out there and find it and write the grants. So there's, there is plenty of money out there for that purpose. The second item is a resolution. I cannot begin to tell you how delighted I am to see that resolution. Number one, it, from my perspective, and this is very important, one thing I don't believe was mentioned about this resolution, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, but the most important thing about this resolution is to give citizens of Monroe an opportunity to get out to vote and get out to vote when it's an important time. November is the best time for people to get out and vote. It maximizes people's opportunity to get out to vote. We want to get people out to vote. We want as many people out there voting and actually going out for that franchise, the right to vote. They're not going to remember in April. Many forget, many don't know the issues. But most of them go out in the month of November. So I think, I'm just absolutely delighted to see it happen. So good for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. I do just want to echo Ms. Bora's statement about extending our terms because I think that's a genuine concern for a few of us here, because in the end, you, myself, Ms. Ratner, and then Ms. Alvarez, Ms. DePain, and Mr. Tufano will have a, a whole extra year, which is not what we signed up for. So anybody that thinks that that is a motivating factor behind this is very mistaken, at least on my behalf. I'm not looking for an extra year, I promise you. So, Ms. DePain?
I, I want the extra year. I like being here, knowing that the children, that I'm part of this group, and that the children of Monroe are being taken care of in a positive way. Our budget philosophy, our strategic plan, it's all coming down the pike, and I want to be on this board when all that is put in place and makes this township look as if we're the best one in Middlesex County.
We are.
So, well, I know we are, but I'm just saying that there, these are things that are going to take a few years, and I'm glad I'm going to be around, and when that time comes to run again, I'm going to run again to make sure that that kindergarten is here and everything that we've talked about is in place for Monroe Township. So I have to say, that's fine with me. I'm retired, I can give, give the time that I want to, and I don't mind giving it. It's, for me, it is a, a job that is enjoyed, and I would keep doing it until maybe I'm Mr. Zeichner's age, at 83. So, Charles, I hope I, I make it another 11 years to reach you. So that's my statement, I, I want to stay, so.
Thank you, Mr. DePain. On that note, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes to all, recuse on items related to the learning tree for item B.
Ms. Bora?
Yes for all, I'm going to recuse on item K for myself.
Okay. Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes to all, excepted staying on N.
Staying on N, okay. Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Ms. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. It is recommended that board action items P through R be approved by consent roll call under a nine-member vote.
Motion.
Second.
Any comments, questions? No questions, okay. The roll call, please.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I'm going to keep this very brief. Welcome back to the 24-25 school year. I hope that everyone had a smooth transition back and that you have all been able to adjust to the new routines. I kind of wrote this as I was sitting here tonight because I felt like tonight was a reminder of why we, as board members, do what we do. We had the presentation of the distinguished apple recognition for the high school. We heard about our five-year strategic plan, which I know a lot of us, almost all of us, participated in and really had a lot of thoughts on, even as we were campaigning, board members. We heard our budget philosophy, and it just kind of felt like this is why we're here, this is our job. It's to see these things happen, it's to watch these plans come into place. We heard our student board members sharing all the things that are happening in our district, and it just kind of put it back into a little bit of perspective for me because I feel like we so often hear so much negativity happening that tonight was a nice reminder of why we are here and why we are here to do what we do. So I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank administration, our staff, our students, our community members for all of their efforts and collaboration with not just the strategic plan, but with the start of the school year, and we appreciate all of your support. So with that being said, I'm wishing everyone continued success as we push through to the end of September, and we are looking forward to see what October brings. And then the next item on our agenda is other board business. Are there any other board members wishing to speak? Ms. Bora?
I'm going to follow up on your high note here. I do agree to everything you said. I want to say this number again from the first presentation tonight, 800 schools in 37 countries. We're one of them. It's not 800 schools in America, it's 800 schools in 37 countries are apple distinguished schools, and that video was so impressive, and I personally know with, you know, my third child going through high school, what they do on those little iPads and the Macs, the iMacs that they have in the graphic design lab and stuff. So it's, it's an incredibly proud moment, one that we should all take glory in, thank the high school administration for their hard work. And I also want to publicly speak to something that I did speak last board meeting about the change in parking spaces in the high school, and I had told Dr. Lehman then, Dr. Chanley, you weren't there, that I'm going to come back and ask for an update end of September. I don't think I need to come back and ask. I am observing as a parent and as a community member that drive by, kids are waking up early to get there early, which is a great thing, because as, as parents dropping off, the lines are smaller. It, it did seem very scary when I first thought of it, that they are not going to have assigned spots, but I have, over the period of the month, observed, talked to, talked to the kids. Of course, they're not happy about having to wake up early, but it's definitely working out in terms of the issues that they had with the assigned spaces not happening, and no other issues happening. There's, doesn't seem to be a safety concern with traffic, and the kids are not driving around, they're just managing time better. So I just wanted to let you guys know that I do not have that concern anymore, and I appreciate the fact that I was hurt before and given the time and the opportunity to revisit it, but I think it's, it's working out very well. So, and the school, the athletic season is going beautifully. I want to wish all the teams good luck with getting into the GMC season. It's very exciting as a sport parent. And last but not the least, congratulations to the high school win ensemble and the honors precaution program for their first-ever-in-history award. It is incredible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Yeah, I'd just like to bring up a couple of things. You know, I think it's great that we're back starting everything up. I want to address a couple of issues that I see out there in the public. For one is, I wish people would just, if you have a question or want to know something about this board, please come up here and ask questions. Please don't go by a lot of the things you see on Facebook. There was a Facebook post recently saying that we were gouging the parents on lunch prices. Monroe lunches are very cheap, they're $3.10, which is way cheaper than most other schools. And, you know, we do our best to keep prices down and make it feasible for everybody, so I, I just ask people that. You know, there's a lot of sour grapes out there, and we would just like people, if you want to know the facts, please come up and ask us. We're not a board of one, we're a board of 10. Everybody votes together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, then we are going to go to our next public forum. Any pub, member of the public wishing to speak? You have four minutes to do so, just please come up and state your name and municipality for the record.
My address is 2A3 Morning Glory Drive, Monroe. To save time, I'm just going through, read my notes for the public forum, okay? Respected BOE Chair, BOE Members, School Superintendent and Principal, I have an important safety issue to bring forward to the board. As a vocal parent of middle school-going child, and on behalf of, behalf of all middle school parents, I want to share below. The upcoming new warehouse near Route 33 Vawa and Apple Garden Butcher Road in a residential neighborhood poses significant concern regarding safety of school bus routes and the overall well-being of children in the area. It is crucial to address these issues proactively to ensure the community's safety remains a priority. Recommendation, I did send an email to the BOE Chair, but was told that we have to reach out to the planning board. But just for the record, I just want to come here and speak up what I recommend to the board. I strongly urge the BOE Chairman, Chairperson, and the BOE School Superintendent. Number one, send request to the Monroe Township Planning Board that any application for the warehouse should be approved with strict conditions prohibiting school traffic in residential neighborhood, thereby safeguarding school bus safety. It is, it will be very helpful if the School Superintendent can come to the planning board meeting on Thursday, which is tomorrow, September 26th, and speak during the public forum. Second point, with the warehouse plan, our local community road, which is Morning Glory Drive, which is my driveway, okay, where my child takes a bus, will significantly increase traffic and endangering school bus route. Thank you, and looking forward for an answer from the BOE Board and the School Superintendent.
Thank you very much. Doctor, do you want to address this, Dr. Chanley or Dr. Lehman, or do you want me to speak on it?
No, you can speak on it.
So, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. We have been made aware that there is a warehouse proposal to be built over on that section of Apple Garden Route 33. Please know that safety is always our biggest priority for our students. Dr. Chanley and I have spoken about this, and we will be happy to, you know, set up communication with the mayor so that we can, you know, inform him, you know, to be mindful of safety for our students. Unfortunately, the building of the warehouse is not in our purview, we don't, we can't address that, but we will certainly work with the township to ensure that our students are safe.
I just add like two things, like, I know it is not preview of the board here, but as a concerned parent, right, if you can send a note to the township and the planning board, say, hey, whatever you do, please do, and don't compromise safety of the children. I think that's what I want you to tell. Tomorrow is the meeting at September 26th. I really want any, any of you on the board, right, can come to the meeting and tell. If you can't, at least convey that on the record, so that way we are at least assured that, okay, something the BOE Board is doing about.
Yes, we can absolutely do that. We can submit, we will definitely send something to the mayor, communicate with the mayor and the planning board to ensure that our students will be safe.
All right, thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
I see, oh, nope.
I'm Chira Kotwal. I live at L, at Eight Lilly Court, Monroe Township, New Jersey. So I bought the house two years ago in the Monroe Township. I was residing in Edison, and still I work in Edison, my wife is working around that area, like South Springfield. We decided to live in Monroe Township because of the, the way it is green, it's suburban, but not too urban, and the, the less traffic. The law of probability, it, the statistics in USA states that when there is a more urban development, the more traffic comes, and more traffic comes, that creates a safety issue. So, and the right to life is the fundamental right in the Constitution of USA. So under right, it is a, in the Declaration of the US Independence, it was the return. So the right to life of the kids also depends upon the, our action. I know that as a board, you cannot work on the application, which is going through the planning board. But as a Monroe resident and you as citizen, you, my colleague, my friends told you that what you asked, that please, as a citizen, if you are, you are allowed to be present tomorrow to advocate the right of life and right on, or US Constitution right to, for the kids, because kids cannot, they're still, they are studying the subject of this right and all this in the school. They may not have studied, they are depend upon us. So I am urging that allow, because the law of probability of the traffic will fatal accident can occur, they, this warehouse has a 28-loading dock, so, and they are asking for 16 variants. And this is against the, like, master plan, because 16 variants is not one variance, two variants, and I think so they are doing it, these variances, because of the, their plan is 16, 22-loading docks. And this is not, and it's, we are in the 21st century. 50 years ago, Edison was planned, Jersi City is planned, we, this part of the area is a newer development. We are, this is a new part of USA, where like Hillsboro and some of the other township took care of it, they shut down the application. Why? Because they are like working in the 21st century, 2024, their mindset is not 1974 or 2004. So it depends upon all these board members to work in the mindset of 2024. This new part is developing, is a 2000, is a newer USA, newer New Jersey, and it depends upon all these board members. So my request to all board members, as a citizen, please take an initiative, please communicate to the mayor, please communicate to the council board that even the, not only this application should be shut down, they should also change the master plan. This master plan cannot be, there is no logic, that in 21st century, 2024, adjustment to the neighbor, the public, like residential area, there is a, up to 10, 10 foot across the road, there is a warehouse being built up. This is United States of America, which is, we are leading in USA, whole world, and like we are inspiring about democracy and all this. So we are now, we cannot do this in 2024, and it is not acceptable. This is not 1974, this is not 2004, this is 2024. And as a citizen, please take, take initiative and please work on it. That is our special request to you. We, I didn't know that this type of master plan exists, because now I am active and I know what is council board, what is education board and all this. So please work on it, you are also a citizen, not only us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Sudhir Mamdapur. I live on 271 Morning Glory Drive, Monroe. And as my friends and fellow residents spoke about the concerns about warehouse that's proposed right by our area, it's a matter of grave concern to us because it's going to impact all the communities along Apple Garden Road, Butcher Road, North Desproil Road, Desproil Road. There are at least about 8,000, 8,000 residents impacted because of this. And as you all know, there are many school buses that fly around these areas. So we just request that, you know, as board, you represent, you know, the BOE tomorrow in the planning board meeting, and raise concerns about this proposed location for the warehouse. Again, as residents, we are not against the warehouse in, you know, Monroe, but it is against the location that's been proposed. So we request that you please represent the board, either as board members, that's, you know, that's better, or if not, you know, as private citizens, if you're able to come up and represent, and just express your concerns about the safety of the, you know, school buses and children. So that's what we're asking for. So my question to you now is, are you able to represent as board of members actually in planning board meetings to raise these concerns?
I'll answer that. Board members cannot speak on behalf of the board without being authorized by the board to do so. So to the extent that any board member wishes to attend the planning board meeting or the zoning board meeting, they absolutely can do so as a private citizen. And they can also address the planning board and address the zoning board, but they would have to make it very clear on the record that they are a member of the Board of Education, and that they, their, what they're saying, their views that they're expressing are solely their opinions and do not represent the opinions of the Board of Education.
I appreciate that, yeah. So how many of you are able to make it tomorrow, and how many of you plan to attend the meeting tomorrow as private citizens? Because this should concern all of you as other residents. After all, it's about children's safety. So, how many of you are able to make it tomorrow and how many of you plan to attend the meeting tomorrow? As private citizens, because this should concern all of you as other residents. Because after all, it's about children's safety. Well, that's not very encouraging. I really wanted to hear some positive, you know, S's here and I would really appreciate if you all can come and, you know, stop by and just express your concerns, you know, as private citizens. I know you, you know, one of the members lives in our community, Usha Sharmaji. But, you know, yeah. So, others, I don't know where you live, but if you don't live there, at least you should drive around and see for yourself in how narrow roads are actually. How narrow these two roads, especially Butcher Road and North Disproil Roads are. And you'll really understand the grave concern that we have. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
My name is Dominic Torito. I don't live here, but my kids do. I have asked before and I'd like to ask again. And it is supported by the New Jersey School Board Association, the Freedom to Read Act, which passed the Assembly in New Jersey. It is in committee in the Senate. And based, judging by how it was voted on in the Assembly, which was down party line, it will pass in the Senate. It allows to, it, it takes responsibility off of librarians and staff members for putting obscene material in libraries, including school libraries. I was wondering if this school board supports that. Not because you can do anything about it, but in case anyone here accidentally finds himself in a voting booth, they will know whether you are about giving pornography, obscene, and age inappropriate material to children.
So, I, I haven't read about this act. I know you did bring this up last month.
Twice, yeah.
I'm not familiar with it. I, I know Mr. Tufano had also mentioned last month that until we have a document in front of us, there really isn't anything for us to take a stance on because we don't know what, what it will entail.
Right, but through this whole meeting, I've seen we don't have this and we don't have that, but we're going to take stances on things that don't exist yet. So, I was just wondering if you had a stance on this one yet? If, if that's possible?
No, we don't have a stance on that.
No one? Okay, all right, well, I'll keep asking, thank you.
Good evening again, Chrissy Skirby Monroe. So far in two thousand twenty-four, there have been over a hundred and thirty-five incidents of gunfire on school grounds, resulting in forty-two deaths and ninety-one injuries nationally. Sadly, school shootings have increased over the last decade regardless of all the safeguards put in place. As a school district, this has to be the one most important issue that you face, keeping kids and staff safe. It has always been the procedure to not discuss safety protocols publicly and especially not areas of concern. I was horrified that a discussion was prompted by Mr. Piero at the Finance Committee last week as he questioned why the district had a shared services agreement that says the town must provide security when they use the school facilities. The town and the district negotiated this agreement and yes, security was brought up and was almost a deal breaker for the town. Myself and Dr. Chanley attended a session at the New Jersey School Boards Conference back in October of two thousand twenty-two. At that meeting, the New Jersey Department of Education's head of security that goes around to all the school districts in New Jersey to give recommendations for how to increase security, said that anytime a school facility is used, whether it be for school, after-school programs, or recreational sports, there should always be a security guard present. His examples of why a district must have security anytime a child is in the school facility made sense. And from there, Dr. Chanley, Mr. Selby, and the board had conversations about this. As it was said in Finance, the district currently does not have the money to provide security for every time the town uses the school. And that is why it became part of the discussion with the mayor. While Mr. Piero said the town has always used the buildings free of charge, he was incorrect. The town entered into a shared services agreement back when the township paid for the tennis courts at the high school. That agreement has ended and the district was no longer obligated to allow for free use of the facilities any longer. That became part of the negotiation. Like the shared services for the track and the football field, the district negotiated allowing the town fifteen years to use Applegarth free of charge and five years for the rest of the facilities. However, the town would have to provide the security. It became a very heated discussion and honestly, the shared services agreement almost did not get settled because I refuse to back down on the safety of our kids. Hearing Mr. Piero say he did not feel security is necessary in our facilities when kids are there for sports through the rec center made me wonder, was he speaking as a board member or an employee of the town? The same town that made that same argument during the negotiations meeting. Mr. Piero, you disclosed that there is no security present at any school while rec basketball uses the buildings. And by saying that, you put a huge bullseye on every single kid now that goes into those buildings at night for sports where there are no security guards. I hope this board and the district will honor the legally binding agreement that was made to ensure that the town provides security. Either pay for our security guards or send a police officer to those schools when they are being used. That means for rec sports, rec camp performances, shows, et cetera. Our schools need to be secure. We are no longer a one-horse town anymore where the example Mr. Piero gave about custodians calling him when he was the head of security, who he then called the head of recreation and told her to get to the school to handle the situation. This makes me so very thankful, he is no longer our head of security.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Sarah Aziz, I live in Monroe Township. Yesterday, the middle school administration sent out a welcome back school, welcome back to school letter from the MTMS Parents Staff Association on what appeared to be official middle school letterhead. This organization is also known as the MTMS PSA or PSA. Unlike the longstanding MTMS PTO, the MTMS PSA has not been active for over two years after it became the subject of an ethics complaint against a former board member in two thousand twenty-one. In fact, I don't recall the PSA having any public elections for officers since then. Today, the middle school administration sent out a welcome back letter from the MTMS PTO that was not on official middle school letterhead. This gives the public the impression that the administration endorses the MTMS PSA over the MTMS PSO. I know that the MTMS PTO is a five oh one C three tax exempt charitable organization. However, I did not see the MTMS PSA registered as a five oh one C three tax exempt charitable organization on the IRS website. Did the middle school administration check the IRS tax exempt status of the MTMS PSA before sending out its letter to all middle school families? Did the administration check the bylaws of the MTMS PSA before sending this letter out? Why is the middle school the only school in our school district that has two different parent organizations with the same mission? Does the board or administration favor the MTMSA, MTMS PSA over the MTMS PTO? If so, why?
So, I don't have an answer for that. I don't know why there is two organizations. I don't know that, is there, what? Dr. Chanley, do you know why we have two organizations in the middle school?
I have no comment.
Okay.
And, excuse me, I'm going to make this statement and I'm going to double check with the attorney because I don't know. I am no longer the principal there. You are more than welcome to write an email directly to Dr. Higgins. I have not been the principal there for three years. As far as I'm concerned, I was told under previous attorneys, this is an old, old situation, that any parent group that follows the, thank you for shaking your head, that any parent group that follows the proper procedures and whether or not they're a five oh one C three, I don't know, that they are permitted to become an active parent group. Mr., thank you. I don't know anything else about it.
The parent teachers associations or PTOs or HSAs or whatever we, we're going to call them, are not school organizations. They're organizations that are separate and apart from the school district. The school district has nothing to do with them other than interacting with them on occasion, whether it be fundraisers, accepting donations from them, et cetera, et cetera. It's not within the purview of the school district to investigate the bylaws, governance, or financial status of any organizations that would like to represent parents in the district. Given the charitable nature, there really isn't any, you know, we're not going to say, no, we're not taking your money because we don't like the way you do thus and such. At the end of the day, what it comes down to is donations being made to the district for something from an HSA and it's up to the board to accept or reject the donation with regard to active involvement in, in the, in the programs in the school. We would have to look to board policy to that to see what, if anything, there is on that. But typically, ninety-nine percent of the school districts in New Jersey view those organizations as separate entities that are not controlled by the district or by the Board of Education, but entities that nevertheless have a nice symbiotic relationship with, with the district.
I just want to clarify, since I did not have the information, I was, I, I just received information that neither organization was sent on official letterhead. That's all I know, that was straight with me.
Good evening, I'm Gregory Nazarian from Mattown, New Jersey. During the proceedings here, I have heard the word, phrases, school bus, safety, and anyway, school buses, safety, and children come up. I have worked here and I just want to say that the drivers that you have and the staff that you have in Monroe are among the finest that I have worked with in the last forty-eight years of my driving. They are a good group and you can rest assured that they will do the best that they can for the safety of the children and the equipment that you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
So, a couple of things. I'll go back to my question before about the retroactive. So, Dr. Chanley said,
State your name and address.
Sorry, Brian Fabiano, Monroe Township. So, Dr. Chanley said, I want to paraphrase and correct me if I'm wrong. I was out sick, my principal made a decision to spend money without board approval. So, when I came back, then I went to the board to get it approved, but then I said, we're not going to do that anymore because I don't think it's right. I think that's what I heard.
No, not at all.
I think that's what I heard because, because at the end of the day, the law says that expenditures are supposed to be approved by the board. And this board, and you, when you were superintendent, sat here in previous years and said that everything would come to the board. I, I sat in the audience in the other building, right? Everything would come to the board with the exception of emergencies or things like keeping the lights on, et cetera, right? And the board would, would approve them. So, something smells really funny there and you followed up by saying, we're not going to do it anymore. When you do something and say, we're not going to do it anymore, it's like an admission of guilt. The other thing I want to address is, is Ms. Bora's hypocrisy. She sat here and she said, well, I, I, I'm going to vote on this tonight, but I think we should have waited longer because we're not really in a rush and, you know, we, we don't know what we're going to need with the money and we might need more money and about two years ago, year or two years ago, we're in another, other building, she sat and casted a vote, yes, to, and I'm a taxpayer, so I can talk about this. Everything you guys spend is my dollar because it comes to us as taxpayers. She casted a vote to extend the superintendent's contract, Dr. Chanley, eighteen months early before it even expired. So, she sits here tonight and says, well, we don't have to rush because we have time. But she, at that time, when she was voting on a contract that was millions of dollars for the taxpayers to foot, there was a rush. So, you can't sit here and say, we're going to rush when we want to rush, we're not going to rush when we don't want to rush. I mean, that is hypocrisy at its finest. Sorry, I have to call it out. I'll call it out for anybody that sits here. You said your, your term also was only extended by three months. No, it was extended by five months when the previous board president, Mrs. Skirby, who was the first board president in more than a decade that ever went out to a, a budget question because she ran the school district and ran our surplus into the ground. So, let's just be clear with that, it was five months and, and it's because essentially we were out of money. The, the school board here, and what I'd like to hear and what I haven't heard from administration yet is, not only how you're going to balance the budget, and it sounds like you're on your way to not have to go out to another question, but how are you going to start funding the surplus that we had prior to Ms. Skirby coming to the board and running it into the ground? I think it was about ten million dollars at that point. The last thing I'll address is, for anybody here, especially Sour Grapes, the, the, the last board president that lost in the last election, just seems to not be able to get over it. To accuse a police officer who was almost thirty years in this town, a police officer? Almost ten years as a security director in this school district? To put our kid, of putting our kids at jeopardy? You are a moron. I, I, I can't say it any other way. That is, there is no other way to describe it. When a man works in this town, goes out on crimes, you don't know what you're getting. I come from a family of law enforcement. You don't know what you're getting when that call comes in. And when I saw Mr. Piero as a director of security here, the kids loved him. The parents came up to him, the teachers came up to him. How many people asked for him to be on this board? The last question I'll ask is this. How many board ethics complaints or affidavits has Ms. Skirby signed against this board costing us taxpayers money?
Madam President, respectfully, his time is over.
She didn't cut the last person off. Let me finish my question. I was,
Because you are,
Let me finish my question. How many, how many ethics complaints or affidavits has Ms. Skirby signed?
Madam President, respectfully, he is consulting people on extra time.
Thank you.
I would like to clarify specifically what I said, since everything I said was taken out of context. I was not at the Personnel Committee due to illness. It had nothing to do with the timeframe in which the document that I signed was provided. Normally, I'm at Personnel with the president, with the vice president, with the chair. And because I was not physically there, and I know that Dr. Lehman spoke on it, there was a question that came to be via email that is normally not a question via email. And that question surrounded the payment, and I'm going to make something else specific because I don't have a time clock. The payment was surrounded for teachers being paid for a middle school event that they supervise at. I did not say we did anything wrong. What I said was, in evaluating that particular program like we evaluate many, perhaps we should change that so that would be another four savings. But the one thing that I absolutely would like to say is I have no idea why you would like to make things personal. There was nothing personal here. It was professional. And if it wasn't personal, you would have taken note. And I read specifically, under Personnel, ten-member vote. Items M, N, R, and S. All had the same exact verbiage with regards to retroactive pay for events that teachers will be at and already were at. And I think it's important for the community to see that it's not personal with any school. There are many schools,
Mr. Fabiano?
All I want to say is, whether the supervision is for children in our school, whether it's for an activity, to be with the children when they come into a testing center, which some people would call babysitting. I think it's valuable, but everybody has their own opinion. Or to get a teacher trained. We sometimes, and I am going to ask the lawyer to just speak on this at the end. We sometimes are tasked with approvals after the fact. And I want that clarified for the public. Thank you very much. Would you please?
It's, it's not uncommon for school districts in their reorganization meetings or their annual meetings to pass a resolution that says that in between board meetings, the superintendent can hire if a need arises. So, it does happen. It's, it's, you know, not something that we would like to happen often or on a regular basis. often or on a regular basis, but it's not necessarily uncommon.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak?
Quick here, just quick comment, it's very clear what you heard tonight. Dr. Chanley said it, you're putting the cart before the horse, and it was done for one reason, that there's people that want to extend their terms on the board, and it's my turn, please, thank you, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, have a good night. Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we're going to close the public forum. We do not need to go into a second closed session. Our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is October 16th, 2024. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.